Good evening, everyone. I'd welcome you here this evening to the regular meeting and work session of the Kalispell City Planning Commission. Today is Wednesday, November 12th, and it's close enough on African time to six o'clock. Can we get a roll call, please?
Rory Young?
Here.
Kate Walker?
Here.
Pip Burke?
Yeah.
Doug Kaufman?
Here.
Joshua Borgart?
Here.
Chad Graham.
Thank you. We have a quorum for this evening. Can I get a motion from the board on the minutes of our October 12th meeting?
Move approval of the minutes of October 12th, 2025, as published?
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by stating aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Moving to hear the public. This is an opportunity for anyone who has something to present to the commission this evening that is not on tonight's agenda. We have three agenda items that will each have their own public hearing. But if there is anything outside of those three items, you're welcome to step up to the podium, state your name and address, and let us know what you're thinking. Last chance. Close here the public and move into our public hearing for this evening. We have three items on our agenda. The first is file KPP-25-03 and file KCU-25-04. An application from LBO Properties for Northwest View preliminary plat for 149 residential units. Second item is file KPP-25-04. An application from Roger Foley for preliminary plat of the North Meadows subdivision containing 44 townhouses. And our final agenda item this evening is file KZTA-25-02. City of Kalispell has initiated a petition for a zoning text amendment relating to the revocation of conditional use permits. So, our first item, can we get a staff report, please?
I will need to recuse myself from vote on this item.
Thank you, Kate.
Good evening and thank you, Planning Commission, Dine Raff Planner 2. This presentation outlines requests for approval of the Northwest View subdivision and conditional use permit associated with staff reports KPP-25-03 and KCU-25-05. The subdivision is located along the Stillwater Road corridor and continues the established pattern of residential development in this area. The project area is approximately 42.58 acres within city limits and zoned R3, consistent with urban residential designation and the growth policy. The proposal includes 149 residential lots, 111 single-family detached, and 38 attached townhome units. The townhome component requires a conditional use permit in the R3 zoning district, which is being considered together with the preliminary plat this evening. The subdivision layout extends the existing neighborhood framework to the south and east using the same block structure and sidewalk system that has been developed in prior phases. The design introduces a mix of lot types while maintaining compatible residential scale and character with surrounding development. The project site is located on the west side of Stillwater Road, north of the existing West View subdivision and west of Stillwater Estates. Glacier High School is located to the southeast and function as a major public service and transportation anchor in this part of the city. To the north is the LHC gravel operation. A berm and fencing currently provides visual and noise buffering between the active pit and the project site. The berm is tied to the gravel operation and will be removed when reclamation occurs under the state requirements. A later slide will address how the subdivision design accounts for that transition. The surrounding land use pattern to the east and south is primarily residential and reflects the planned development direction for the Stillwater Road corridor. The Kalispell growth policy designates this area as urban residential. This designation supports neighborhood-scale residential development at urban desities with municipal water and sewer service. The property is zoned R3, which is the implementing zoning district for the urban residential classification. The R3 district allows single-family homes and attached townhome units with townhomes reviewed through the conditional use permit process to evaluate compatibility with surrounding development. The subdivision aligns with both the growth policy designation with the R3 zoning framework with conditional use permit under consideration this evening addressing the associated townhome component. The subdivision is designed around an interconnected internal street network that provides multiple access points and evenly distributes traffic throughout the neighborhood. The layout extends from Dragon Fire Avenue and Lumberjack Place, both of which connects to Stillwater Road, ensuring a cohesive link with broader transportation system. The townhome groupings are situated to align the established block pattern, creating a consistent and visually balanced streetscape along primary neighborhood corridors. The lot configuration and street design continue the residential pattern established by adjacent developments to the south and east, preserving the neighborhood's cohesive pattern and connected design. Townhomes are permitted in R3 zoning district through the conditional use permit process. The CUP review addresses the placement and configuration of the attached units to ensure they will fit within the established block pattern and circulation network. The parent lots for the townhome groupings meet the required minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet prior to sublotting into individual free simple unit. Shared driveway access will be used. A driveway width are limited to maintain the consistent streetscape and pedestrian environment along with boulevard sidewalk system. Final subplot layout, shared access arrangement, and maintenance responsibilities will be finalized during the final plat and building permit review stages. The traffic impact study conducted for this project demonstrates that the surrounding roadway network will continue to operate at an acceptable level of service once the plan improvements are in place. Primary access to the subdivision will be provided from Dragon Fire Avenue and Lumberjack Place, both of which connect directly to Stillwater Road. This design maintains consistency with the existing street framework and distributes traffic efficiently. Through multiple access points, additionally, the subdivision layout has been designed to preserve the future Stillwater Road roundabout corridor, ensuring that the long-term transportation improvements identified by Public Works can be accommodated without conflict. The subdivision will be served by municipal water and sewer. As part of public improvements in this area, a 16-inch water main extension along Stillwater Road is required. That extension completes the looped system in this section of the city and provides the necessary fire flow capacity for the development and surrounding service area. Fire protection will be provided by Station 62. Hydrant spacing, access design, and fire flow verification will be reviewed at the engineering stage during construction plan supplemental. Parkland dedication is required at a rate of .03 acres per dwelling unit. For 149 lots, the required dedication is 4.47 acres. The preliminary plat identifies approximately 1.95 acres of parkland within the subdivision. Additional land dedication or recreational improvements will be needed at later stages to meet the full requirement. The Parks and Recreation Department will review the location, access, and design of the park areas during final design. A waiver of the right to protest a future park maintenance district will be included on final plat. The northern boundary of the subdivision is adjacent to LHC gravel operation. A berm and a fencing are currently present as part of their operation. That berm is tied to an active use and will be removed when reclamation occurs under state requirements. A note will be placed on final plat to document that the berm is temporary and will be removed in the future. The lot depths, along with northern edge, have been extended to provide space for the future private fencing and landscaping once reclamation is completed. In summary, the subdivision has been evaluated in accordance with the preliminary plat review criteria, and the townhome component has been reviewed under the conditional use permit standards. The proposal is consistent with the urban residential growth policy designation and the R3 zoning district, with the layout that complements the established development pattern along Stillwater Road corridor. Required infrastructure and access improvements are incorporated into the subdivision design, while parkland dedication, utility extensions, and detailed engineering will be addressed through later review stages. Based on these findings, staff recommends that the planning commission adapt the staff report as findings of fact and forward a recommendation of approval to the Kalispell City Council for both the preliminary plat and the conditional use permit, subject to the conditions outlined herein. Staff have received comments and submitted to commission. We are available to answer any questions, and I believe they're here to speak on their behalf as well if they have any question, if you have any questions as well.
Thank you, Donnie.
Thank you.
Any questions of staff from the commission? I guess the only question I had is the CUP. Is that because it's more than two townhomes attached? I can't remember. Is that the trigger that it's three or more with a CUP?
So, it's two or more require conditional use permit. And the reason is, is that the R3 traditionally in the city has been a single-family based zone. And so, like in the R4, two units don't require the conditional use permit because it's a two-family based zone. That's also why 6,000 square feet per subplot is required in that. So it allows the attachment, but you don't get the double density like you would in the R4.
And they're townhomes as opposed to duplexes or triplexes?
Right. They're, yeah, attached single families. So they'd be townhomes with sublots.
Okay. Thank you. No questions? Can I get a motion from the board by the commission? Oh, should we do a public hearing first? That's a good idea. Thanks, Doug. So I will open this up for any public comment on Northwest View. If you have anything to say, please step up to the podium, state your name and your address, please.
Good evening. My name's Eric Mulcahy with Sand Surveying, and I'm representing the developer, Mark Owens of LBO. Also, Brandon Teis with Civil Solutions is here if you had any questions on the infrastructure. We've read through the staff report. It's an excellent review of the project, and we've got no problems with the staff report. The only item we would like some consideration on is condition number 19, which requires that the townhome units share a driveway, a 24-foot driveway. We made our townhome lots wider than would be a standard. They're 40-foot wide sublots, so 90-foot wide parent lot. And also, a number of our townhomes have alley access, and we would like to be able to have individual driveways off the alley. And we would like the option to have individual driveways on some of our townhome lots that will access the street because we're working with some topography. And we feel like if we can split the driveways, we can perhaps adjust the unit. So one unit might be higher in elevation than the other unit, which wouldn't, if we had a shared driveway, it would be really hard to do, to split that. Also, the shared driveway kind of promotes the snout house design with the two driveways attached in the front. And if we can split those off up, we get a more pleasant streetscape within the development. So we would like consideration to allow individual driveways or at the very least, the lots that have alley access to be able to have individual accesses off the alley, which is, the alley is privately maintained. So, snow removal and maintenance will be at the homeowner's expense for those alley access lots. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Could you just clarify which condition, Eric? I thought you said nine is a 29.
29.
Correct.
29, okay.
We will, thank you. We'll discuss it with staff. Any other public comment?
I know that place. I've worked on that place. And it's just disappointing to see all this land being tore up like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment? Last chance.
We're recording in progress.
No, not from you. So I'm going to close the public hearing on that item and look to the board for a motion.
I'll move that the board recommended the Kalispell City. I'm sorry, I'm getting confused here. Recommend that the Kalispell City Planning Commission adopt staff report KPP-25-03 as findings of fact and recommend to the Kalispell City Council that the preliminary plat for Northwest View subdivision be approved, subject to the conditions as listed.
Seconded.
Do we have to do these as separate items?
Yes.
Okay. So this is on the preliminary plat to start with. Any questions from the commission or any discussion from the commission?
I'd be here, I'd be interested in hearing from staff regarding the proposed revision to the shared driveways.
So, yeah, as far as the shared driveways, it's something that we typically try to do in those situations. You know, these are, usually you see that in an R4 or a PUD where there's some smaller lot sizes. Here, they're big enough that, you know, it's not a huge concern if that went away and had individual driveways in this situation. But it's usually something we try to get, but if there's topography or something that forces that in a different direction, especially if there's alley access, we'd need it in that situation. So that would be completely up to the board.
Thank you, PJ.
Any other board discussion?
To follow up with that, depending, the council, or sorry, the commission could just strike that whole condition if you felt like that was appropriate. There isn't any other, I guess, strings attached to that condition, pretty much in that case. Given the size of lots in an R3 zone, because they are, even the sublots are a minimum of 6,000 and with alley loaded, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't have any objection to removing that condition.
Thank you, Jared.
Any other comments, thoughts?
Yeah.
Do we have to go through the motion and, or, so I guess I would, if the board are interested, I would entertain a motion on item 29.
I would move, I would move the board to strike item, strike condition 29 completely.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on removing item 29 from the list of conditions? I guess my thought is if they're 6,000 square foot parent lots, that's, I'm comfortable with that. Anything else? Can we get a roll call on the motion to strike condition number 29?
Joshua Borgart?
Yes.
Rory Young?
Aye.
Kate Walker, recused. Pip Burke?
Aye.
Doug Kaufman?
Yes.
So can, that condition, well, the commission moves and approves removal of that condition. Back to discussion on the motion for approval of the preliminary plat. Any other questions or discussion from the commission? We ready? Roll call, please.
Pip Burke?
Aye.
Joshua Borgart?
Yes.
Doug Kaufman?
Yes.
Rory Young?
Aye.
Motion for the preliminary plat is approved. Can I get a motion from the commission on the conditional use permit?
I'll move that the Kalispell City Planning Commission adopt staff report KCU-25-05 as findings of fact and recommend to the city Kalispell City Council that the conditional use permit to allow townhome development within the R3 residential zoning district be approved as the conditions listed.
Seconded.
So motion is moved and seconded. Any discussion from the commission? Do we need to?
So, I'm assuming that you meant the conditions as amended, not as listed. That would take out the requirement for the shared driveway. Otherwise, that'd be a condition on that CUP as moved.
Doesn't that just apply to the preliminary plat approval?
Same conditions for the CUP. There's shared conditions in there. So.
I did mean that.
Okay.
That was going to be my question. So the motion is to approve the conditions without 29?
As amended, yeah.
As amended.
Yes.
Any questions, discussion?
Thank you.
No? Roll call, please.
Rory Young?
Aye.
Doug Kaufman?
Yes.
Joshua Borgart?
Yes.
Pip Burke?
Aye.
And that will go to city council? PJ, Donnie, someone?
December 1st.
December 1st.
Monday.
Thank you. Welcome back. So we will now be moving into our second item, which is file KPP-25-04. Is the application for preliminary plat approval on North Meadows subdivision. And I will be recusing myself and hand over to Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you, Rory. Going to address item number two now, file KPP-25-04. Roger Foley application. Can we please have the staff report?
Sure. Thank you. Roger Foley submitted an application for preliminary plat approval for North Meadows subdivision, which contains 44 townhome lots, which are attached single-family lots, or 22 parent lots in this situation on approximately 12 acres, including lots, roads, and common areas. The proposal includes variance requests relating to setbacks from Ashley Creek, which are generally 200 feet, requesting to be reduced in some areas to 100 feet. Cul-de-sac road length, which is generally a maximum of 600 feet, to be increased to about 870. And block length, which is generally a maximum of 600 feet, to be increased to about 900 feet. The applicant initially came forward with requests for annexation, initial zoning of RA1, which is residential apartment, and a conditional use permit for a 99-unit apartment complex during the summer of 2025. After a positive recommendation from the planning commission, the city council approved the annexation but modified the zoning to R4, which matches the zoning in the surrounding area. The zoning designation does not allow for multifamily dwellings as a use, so the conditional use permit did not proceed forward. By choosing the R4 zone, the council provided for a residential subdivision rather than a multifamily development. Townhomes are recognized as attached single-family dwellings, specifically single-family homes with just no setback between them, and are allowed as a permitted use in the R4 zone. Discussion at the council meeting recognized that a subdivision variance would likely be necessary as part of the subdivision application. In terms of the location, you can see where it is here, just bordering Ashley Creek on the north. You've got South Meadows developed to the south. Other subdivisions came in, Stratford, for example, Lone Pine to the west. And you can see the North Belmar area off to the east. So it's got development on three sides and then bordered by the creek on the north. The property is undeveloped, and aerial imagery shows that it's been a natural grass field since at least 1985. In terms of utilities, the blue running through here are water lines. And again, you can see them on three different sides. Be accessed, in this case, by an extension of those existing lines on the existing extension of South Meadows. That would extend into the subdivision. Same with the sewer, green is sewer lines. That would extend into the subdivision, subdivision as well. The sanitary sewer would utilize a private lift station that would then feed into that gravity line that's existing. Storm drainage would be provided for and would be designed in accordance with the standards for design and construction. The subdivision would most directly access Bluestone Drive off of an existing extension of South Meadows Drive. Again, this is the property right through here. There's that existing extension, which is already annexed into the city and was provided for previously at that location. While it's not likely to develop in the future, it was put in place, annexed, and into the city with the initial phases of South Meadow when that subdivision was developed. Bluestone runs east to west through the subdivision, through that location through there. The extension to the east connects with Airport Road near the Legion Baseball Field and the airport with other potential connections to Airport Road at Teal Drive, Murganzer, and Destiny Lane as you go down towards the south. The extension to the west would connect with Denver Avenue and Sunnyside Drive. There's also an off-ramp from the Highway 93 bypass just to the west of the Denver-Sunnyside intersection. And although there isn't an on-ramp, the off-ramp provides another alternate means of accessing the subdivision. The overall site's generally flat without any major topographical or geological features limiting development. The applicant submitted a Geotech report from Alpine Geotechnical from July of '25 and addendum dated October 30th of '25. The report did not indicate any major impediments to the development of the site. The original report related to the multifamily development that was previously proposed included recommendations that should be followed during development. The addendum confirmed that the findings in the report would apply to this proposal. The addendum also addressed three additional items. First, basements are not recommended on the site due to subgrade conditions that become softer with depth. Did not limit crawl spaces. Second, the environmental assessment noted a potential for hydroic soils in the western portion of the subdivision. A detailed onsite analysis and boring indicated that hydroic soils were not present. And third, the addendum highlighted that the Geotech report discussed a minimum 30-foot setback from the slope crest over Ashley Creek, so that existing slope stability could be unaffected by building surcharge loads. And I'll touch on that a little bit more later. Property is already annexed in and zoned. Uh, property is already annexed in, uh, and zoned R four, that's the existing zoning, uh, for the property. Uh, that city R four is what you see in the orange, which covers just about all of the surrounding area. Uh, the Kalispell Growth Policy Future Land Map designates the property as urban residential. Uh, the urban residential designation supports the existing R four zoning at densities of up to twelve units per acre. It also supports more intensive uses, including up to twenty units per acre or more with RA one zoning. Uh, this proposal would have a def- density of about three point six units per acre. Uh, the City of Kalispell Growth Policy, uh, chapter four A on housing encourages a variety of residential development that provides housing for all sectors and income levels within the community. Uh, city services, including sewer, water, and streets are in the vicinity and available to the property as well. Here you can see the overall layout. You've got Bluestone, this is that extension of South Meadows, uh, existing up to this point, um, but would then extend up to, to, um, just about to the creek level. Um, there would be a few lots that would be accessed on the west side of that with common area. And then the road extension would come in with the cul-de-sac on the end. Uh, remaining areas, common area, that would be through there, that, uh, would also be developed as, as parkland and would include the storm facility, most likely in this location right there. Uh, the internal street would be built to, uh, a local street design standard pursuant to the standards for design and construction, and would include, would not be limited to sidewalks, landscape boulevards, streetlights, and curb and gutter. Uh, all roads would be designed and constructed pursuant to the standards for design and construction. Uh, with the proposed townhouse development without alleys, shared driveways, uh, should be utilized, uh, whenever possible to minimize the impact on the street scape. Uh, TIS, or Traffic Impact Study, uh, was prepared by, uh, ABLE and Traffic Services, addressing the impacts of the subdivision. The initial TIS was from May of twenty-five and was tied to that multifamily pro- um, proposal, uh, which was earlier considered. Uh, there was an October twenty-five update, which addressed the modification to forty-four townhomes and incorporates comments related to the original submittal, including details showing that Bluestone Drive would continue to operate, uh, within its expes- expected capacity as a local street. Uh, per city standards, developments required to maintain or improve the level of service of existing roadway intersections. Uh, no additional mitigations recommended, although it should be noted that the traffic control described in the TIS recommendation for Bluestone Drive and Big Park Drive has already been implemented. Uh, subdivision regulations require a minimum of point zero three acres of parkland per dwelling unit, uh, for single family lots, or one point three two acres for the forty-four lots, or the equivalent value in land within improvements. Uh, the proposed plat includes about, uh, six and three-quarter acres of common area and open space. And while some of the area is not conducive to park use, uh, there is a significant amount of land that, in conjunction with amenities, would provide the park area for the subdivision. Uh, police and fire protection would be provided by the city as it currently is, given that it's already annexed. Uh, it should be noted that with over thirty homes on a single access, all homes in the subdivision, uh, will need to install a residential fire sprinkler system under the fire code. Uh, as far as floodplain, uh, you can see on the map here, most of the floodplain runs to the north. Uh, part of that, and this is a photo from the site, uh, there's fairly steep bank, particularly on the west side uh, of the property that kind of drops down a little bit as you get to the east. Um, but that forces that floodplain off to the north and not onto the property. In terms of this map, the area that's shown here in orange is five hundred year floodplain, which the city, as is typical, does not, uh, regulate to. Uh, the proposal includes variance requests relating to setbacks from Ashley Creek, uh, the cul-de-sac road and block length. Uh, there are five criteria in the ordinance to consider when reviewing a variance. Uh, first is whether the granting of the variance will be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare, or injurious to other adjoining properties. Second is whether the conditions on which the request for the variance is based are unique to the property on which the variance is sought and are not applicable generally to other property. Uh, third, uh, is whether because of the particular physical surrounding shape or topographical conditions of the specific property involved, an undue hardship to the owner would result as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of these regulations is enforced. Fourth is whether the variance would cause an increase, uh, cause a substantial increase in public cost. And five is whether the variance will in any manner vary the provisions of the zoning regulations or growth policy. So, the first variance relates to the stream setback. Um, under section twenty-eight point three point zero seven of the subdivision regs, there's a minimum setback from rivers and streams, which allows only limited uses, uh, which is two hundred feet for Ashley Creek and the Flathead Stillwater and Whitefish Rivers. Section twenty-eight point three point zero seven sub F provides that, quote, "The developer may request a reduction in setbacks listed in section three point zero seven B by providing the planning department with sound scientific information and reasonable mitigation to address potential impacts. In the case of bank stabilization, a geotechnical report shall be required. The review and approval, conditional approval or denial of the requested reduction shall be in accordance with section twenty-eight point seven point zero one, which relates to variances of these regulations," unquote. The regulation effectively uses two hundred feet as a starting point, but contemplates possible reductions based on specifics of a given site, uh, when supported by additional information, including geotechnical analysis. Uh, the Geotech addendum discussed that minimum thirty-foot setback from the slope crest over Ashley Creek, so that the affecting slope stability would be unaffected, um, by building surcharge loads. Um, the detail that's included here, uh, shows that thirty-foot line, which runs through right here, this thinner red line. Uh, the thicker red line is the proposed hundred-foot setback, which comes through here, which keeps, again, all those lots, um, away from not only the thirty-foot, but also the hundred-foot. And then the two hundred-foot setback would be what would be otherwise required, which would come through that portion of the property right there. Uh, the green, um, which you see up there and through there, uh, shows the hundred-foot setback from wetlands, which is a separate requirement, uh, which is met in this case. Uh, with the proposal, all lots and structures be well away from any areas of slope stability concern identified by the Geotech engineer. Uh, the two proposed lots closest to the slope crest are over a hundred feet from the creek and about sixty to ninety feet from the crest. The location of the lots, particularly with an additional five to ten-foot building setback from the property line, uh, helps ensure that the appropriate distance is maintained. Following the recommendations in the Geotech report regarding construction will also help ensure slope stability is maintained. By ensuring slope stability, the reduction would not be detrimental to public health, safety, or the general welfare, and would not be injurious to other properties. As an infill lot with housing on three sides and bordered by the creek on the north, uh, there are significant constraints on the development of these twelve acres for residential purposes, uh, which isn't allowed to use under the zoning ordinance and the growth policy. Uh, the undulating nature of the stream bank creates an irregular setback line, uh, that's very narrow in places, particularly here on the west. Um, but, uh, much wider in others is particularly shown on the east, but also through the central portion of the property. Um, at the narrowest spot, uh, the access street would extend through the setback area. Uh, those conditions are unique to the property and not generally applicable to similarly situated properties. Uh, and additional factors outlined in the variance application, according to the Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks paper called the, quote, "Use of building setbacks in the water body standards of the fish and wildlife recommendations for subdivision development in Montana, justification and rationale," which is the whole title on that. Uh, the two hundred-foot setback recommendation, uh, which formed the basis for our local regulation, uh, was based on a hundred and fifty-foot vegetated buffer and a fifty-foot buffer, foot building setback from the vegetated buffer. Uh, it defines a vegetated buffer as a natural undisturbed strip of green belt along each side of a natural water body. Uh, while there is some value to the flat grassy area on top of the bluff, the lower lying areas along the stream with the wetland and riparian vegetation is of greater concern. Uh, per the application, the proposed layout satisfies the intent, quote, "By preserving the riparian areas while ensuring lots remain more than fifty feet from the top of bank," unquote. Additionally, the area between the lots and the slope crest will be common area that will be part of the landscape plan to be developed with the Parks Department, that can be created with the creek in mind for the satisfying the intent of the buffer area. And again, these are the photos that we showed earlier, but here you can see the, the flat upper area where they're proposing the development. Uh, and you can see where most of that riparian vegetation and wetland area would be below that bluff. Um, and again, that was something that was submitted by the applicant in support of the, uh, variance request. Um, as I noted, there are unique physical conditions for the subject property. Uh, when the regulation strictly applied, the regulation in conjunction with those conditions creates an undue hardship. Under the regulation, only streets crossing the creek would be allowed, so the South Meadows extension would be permitted, but the internal street would not fully meet that standard. In terms of lot impacted, lots impacted, over half are outside of the setback. Of the lots that would be less than two hundred feet, most structures would be at or nearly at the two hundred-foot mark. Uh, furthermore, the subdivision design brings lots to the southern portion of the property to maintain as large a setback as reasonably possible. The proposed lot lines in the subdivision are in some places more than two hundred feet and in some places less, uh, due in large part to the irregular stream bank, uh, but are intended to largely meet the intent of the regulation. Strict, strict interpretation of the regulation would create an undue hardship rather than a mere inconvenience, and that development of the site would be substantially impacted by rerouting the internal road to the rear property lines of the existing homes, at least on the western end. It would force that along the back end of those homes through there, uh, and significantly reduce the number of homes in the subdivision without any real reduction in infrastructure costs, uh, which would increase the cost for both the developer and for future homeowners. Uh, the variance will not cause a substantial increase in public costs. And there are no provisions to the zoning ordinance which would be affected by the variance. The regulation's not directly addressed in the growth policy. Um, however, in general terms, the growth policy does encourage an adequate supply and mix of housing uh, that meets needs of present and future residents in terms of cost type, design, and location. It encourages development to occur near existing services, especially sewer, uh, as well as at infill locations. Uh, the natural environment chapter recognized the importance of minimizing the impact of development, rather than prohibiting it by encouraging development that is compatible with or enhances natural resource areas. Uh, the proposal attempts to strike a balance between those goals by creating a design which allows for reasonable development of housing that minimizes impacts on the creek and is consistent with the growth policy. Uh, based on the foregoing, the requested variance would satisfy the criteria stated in, uh, zoning regulations, and the variance should be granted subject to substantial compliance with the application submitted and any related conditions of approval. Um, next variance request, um, section twenty-eight point three point one four sub C of the subdivision regulations provides that dead-end streets shall not exceed six hundred feet, measured from the center line of the intersection to the center of the cul-de-sac. Now, the proposed subdivision contains a single road, which is approximately eight hundred and seventy feet long, based on that measurement. Block length is tied directly to the length of the road as a practical matter. Uh, under section twenty-eight point three point one two sub A of the subdivision regulations, block length, block lengths are to be between two hundred and fifty and six hundred feet. Uh, this proposal would increase the block length to about nine hundred feet. Uh, the additional length is a result of the same conditions related to road length. Uh, the subdivision standard on length of street was originally adopted based on Fire Department Standard Operating Guidelines, or SOGs, and fire access protection would be the primary concern from a public health, safety, and welfare perspective. SOGs are no longer used by the fire department. Instead, the focus is on an approved turnaround and hydrant layout. Uh, the fire department reviewed the proposed subdivision design and had no issues with it. In addition to the cul-de-sac, which would be exactly what they would want to see, uh, the intersection and extension of South Meadows Drive provides a hammerhead turnaround, and that's the location there. Uh, importantly, the number of homes on the street will require residential fire sprinkling systems in all of the homes, which creates better fire protection than a shorter road without those systems. Uh, the variance would not be detrimental to public health, safety, or the general welfare, and would not be injurious to other properties. As an infill lot with housing on three sides and bordered by the creek on the north, uh, there are significant straight, constraints on the development of these twelve acres for residential purposes, as is allowed under the zoning and growth policy. Uh, there are no reasonable connections to surrounding rights of way, uh, which could provide that second access. Uh, those conditions are unique to the property and not generally applicable to similarly situated properties. Um, as previously mentioned, there are unique physical conditions of the property. Uh, when the regulation strictly applied, the regulation in conjunction with those conditions creates an undue hardship as opposed to a mere inconvenience. Under the regulation, the road would be about two hundred and seventy feet shorter, uh, which would create a large unused area limiting the benefits of the project as infill, uh, that would create kind of that no man's land, uh, in that area through there. The shorter road, uh, would either reduce the number of homes by fourteen to sixteen units or require further encroachments into the creek setback without any corresponding benefit for public health, safety, or welfare. Uh, strict interpretation of the regulation, uh, would create an undue hardship rather than a mere inconvenience, and that development of the site would be substantially impacted. Variance would not cause a substantial increase in public costs, and there are no provisions of the zoning ordinance which would be affected by the variance. Uh, the regulation's not directly addressed in the growth policy. In general terms, however, the growth policy does encourage that mix of housing, um, and also encourages development to occur near existing services, especially sewer, as well as at infill locations. Uh, based on the foregoing, the requested variances for road and block length would satisfy the cur- criteria stated in section twenty-eight point seven point oh one, and the variance is, should be granted subject to substantial compliance with the application submitted and any related conditions of approval. Uh, we did receive one written public comment, which was provided to the board. Um, and with that, staff would recommend that the Kalispell Planning Commission adopt staff report KPP twenty-five oh four as findings of fact and recommend to the Kalispell City Council that the North Meadows subdivision preliminary plat, along with the three requested variances, be approved, subject to thirty-two listed conditions, and be happy to answer any questions.
Board, any questions?
I had a question regarding the, uh, variance for the setback from the creek. So, there is no requirement for like buffer averaging or anything like that for water quality or riparian animal movement or anything like that? Like, it's just a pure setback?
It's just a setback, so when you look at what the, um, that paper was, it kind of formed that regu- there that recommendation for city count, for, um, the city to adopt as, into our regulations. It kind of used that average, looked at that fifty-foot building setback, and a hundred and fifty feet is typically what you would see. I'd say as far as, um, water quality, that's certainly something that Public Works looks at as part of the stormwater design. Uh, you know, it's not just about directing the, the flow, but also what the water quality is, is going into that. But in terms of having that, that added buffer in there, um, with the two hundred feet and the hundred feet from the wetlands, which I touched on, but was a little bit separate. Those are the regulations that we'd have that would help ensure, um, what you were getting at there.
Thank you.
Uh, I have a question about the block length, or I guess it's actually just about sprinklers, um, in general. Um, so I understand these will be individual lots, and each town home will be required to have sprinklers. So, before you can get compliance or can move in, you have to have the sprinklers, right? They have to be tested?
Right, so that, that'd be part of what would require with the building permit? So, they'd have to have that design, and that would be part of the permit, and then that would need to be installed and functional before we'd issue a certificate of occupancy?
Okay, so for individual residences that have sprinklers, uh, is there any kind of maintenance or like checking that they work in like five years or ten years or anything like that, or?
Yeah, like, like any system that you'd have, you'd need to do the maintenance.
It's just on the owner, kind of thing?
But, um, yeah, I'm not specific, sure specifically what they have in place for that, but generally, fire sprinkler systems do require ongoing maintenance and certification. Um, I'm not sure how that would apply in the residential setting, but that's a typical thing that you would see with fire sprinklers.
Okay.
So, that would probably be included in the CCR, CCRs, or something like that?
Um, one of the conditions in there was including it as a, as a note on the final plat, as well as in the conditions, the CCRs, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And you said that the fire department's already reviewed this and given it the thumbs up?
Yes, they did. They looked at that in, in terms of, you know, again, the, that six hundred-foot standard flowed from an older operating guidelines that they used. Um, they would actually be more supportive of having this longer layout because that would require the fire sprinkler system. They would rather have the long road with the fire sprinklers and the shorter road without it.
Thank you.
Um, and then, sorry, just to reiterate as well, the fire hydrants have to be installed before they can construct anything here. So, the whole subdivision will be covered by fire in that regard, correct? Before they start construction or anything?
Correct, yes, that, that'd be part of, of the, um, subdivision review process and the engineering, so they'd have to have those installed and operational before we'd final plat.
Okay.
And you, and you'd need final plat before you could do any home construction.
Right, got it, thank you. That's all I have.
Any more comments or questions from the board? Hearing no, I'll now move into the, uh, public hearing portion of this item. Please remember that you're addressing the board and not staff and not the fellow congregates. If you have something to say, please step forward, give your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Jaclyn Pipolo, one three nine Rimrod Court. I didn't think I would be back, but when I received the letter and it talked about the setback- I didn't think I would be back, but when I received the letter and it talked about the setbacks, I'm here to ask you not to reduce them. A 200 foot setback for impaired streams, including Flathead, Stillwater and Whitefish Rivers and Ashley Creek, were implemented as part of the City of Calispel Design Standards on December 19th, 2011 by ordinance 1707. The regulation requires a minimum 200 foot setback from the ordinary high water mark or the top of the stream bank if the mark is not discernible for impaired streams to help protect water quality and wildlife habitat. For other water courses, different setback requirements such as 50 or 100. Now, again, the key is other water courses. This is impaired streams. And by the ordinance, in 2011, Ashley Creek is impaired. So, also, which that gentleman read from, I have here your Montana Design Standards. And in your section 28.03.07, it lists water course setback. And it says where a development is crossed by or is adjacent to a water course, the developer shall migrate the impacts of the development on the water course through the use of setbacks and limitations on adjacent development. This migration may be increased in areas of significant floodplain, which he mentioned floodplain, adjacent wetlands or for bank stabilization. Proposed lot boundaries will be located at or beyond the minimum setback. The purpose: supporting the riparian habitat; two, protect water quality; three, protecting the stream, river, channel and banks; four, maintaining an effective sediment filter which helps maintain water quality; five, protect adjacent property from natural water course morphology. And then, under section B, minimum setbacks, it says a minimum 200 foot setback shall be provided for impaired streams, currently Ashley Creek and the Whitefish, Stillwater and Flathead Rivers. And then, I just want to really stress, he talks about something, I'm sorry, my mind's a little blank right now, but about an impact if you have to reduce from 44 to 14. Why were the, okay, I know you can't answer questions, but this was in place by people before you, the importance of a 200 foot setback. Here you have land, which the one picture is to me a little bit misleading because it's more narrow than the picture projection. We need that 200 foot setback to protect Ashley Creek. It's a law or it's an ordinance. What's going to stop another developer coming to you and saying, and they want to build on Whitefish or Stillwater or the Flathead Rivers and say, well, you did it for him, now I want you to do it for me? Obviously, people before you thought it was important to have a 200 foot setback. So, are you going to allow it for this development? I'm not opposed. Put the townhouses in, but put them in with what the land is already allows. I don't see why you have to make changes for this developer. If he wants to develop that land, he develops the land the way the land is. You don't make exceptions. Could you make an exception for him? You're going to have to make it for others and then we're going to lose our creeks. We're going to lose our rivers. I mean, Bieber is doing a park. The Bieber family is doing that park and they're respecting Ashley Creek. This is just up the road from that. So, I'm begging you, please take this seriously and not allow the setbacks. He can do his development, but he has to do it with whatever the land will support. Thank you again.
Thank you. Further comment?
Hi, my name is Ricky Moffett. I live at 147 Rimrock Court. So, I would neighbor the west area there and I'm just requesting that the rules and the regulations that are already in place to please be adhered to and that the variance request be denied for this. Again, we've been here this summer with the same developer, a different project. This is much better and it fits so much better into what, you know, everyone would expect to be into this neighborhood. But if we could just please stick within the rules that are already existing, that would be a perfect fit. It would be so great. One of the biggest problems, I think, is the most variance, the most feet. I'm trying to think of the words to say this correctly. I guess the part where it would really matter the most is on this west side of the project that's proposed here on the preliminary plat. And that's really where it needs to be acknowledged that there's documented landslides on Rimrock Court and the backyards of people just on the other side of Ashley Creek. That's really where the 200 foot setback needs to be maintained. I mean, at the very minimum, that's, it's got to be right there. But I would love to see the rules be enforced and the variance be denied throughout that. It just doesn't seem to be a big enough reason just because the number of townhomes would have to decrease. That setback should not be respected. With the newly adjusted R4 zoning, the subdivision rules and requirements kind of closed the loophole where the 200 foot setback would not have been implemented had it been a multifamily unit. So, for this to be a subdivision, it would be great to see that, you know, held to the same standards as any other subdivision should be. Anything less than 200 feet, especially for an area as compromised as this, I think that it's just begging for more proven structural and property damage that we've already seen on Rimrock Court. To echo my neighbor, Ashley Creek is already characterized as an impaired creek. It's stated multiple times. And water quality standards have also been brought up in different DEQ statements. For the same area, the same developer, Counselor Ryan Hunter at our last meeting had said that if we committed, this is a quote from him, if we committed to a 200 foot buffer and sidewalks for safety, I'd look at this differently. Counselor Hunter voted against and all the counselors denied. So, the project in its initial proposal, it was denied. One of the major reasons for the denial was, just a few months ago, was encroachment on Ashley Creek and then the failure to maintain that 200 foot buffer. So, I would, I don't know if the developer is here today. I don't believe that he attended any of the last meetings either, but it just seems like some of the same things keep being asked for and that's not being met. So, I would love to know if that's something that we can work through. And just trying not to repeat anything, I know you've guys had a long day here, but my main point is really that Ashley Creek hasn't changed in the last two months. And so, I would just love to see the minimum 200 foot setback not be changed either. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Further comment?
Good evening. Toby McIntosh, 2250 Highway 93 South, Calispel. I'm with Jacola Engineering and Architecture. I know we were all here earlier this summer with the multifamily project, so I appreciate you all being here to consider the preliminary plat before us. I do want to point out one, a couple of things. First, Kagan Routes with Alpine Geotechnical is here tonight. If there's questions specific to slope stability, our geotechnical report, he'd be here to help answer any questions. One of the things, I think, staff did a good job highlighting the variance request. One point on the dead end street length that I would like to bring up is, as PJ alluded to, the block length and the 600 foot dead end length are kind of tied at the hip. The fire code does allow a 750 foot dead end length with an approved turnaround and then greater than 750 feet is allowed upon review by the Fire Department. So, I think as was highlighted, the Fire Department has reviewed the plan and that they're comfortable with the dead end street length. Secondly, just based on the landlocked nature of the parcel, a second access or an intermediate block is just not feasible unless, you know, someone wanted to not have their house anymore. So, we're working within the constraints of the lot. And I think as we talked a little bit, this portion of land was already, was a part of the overall developer, had been tied up in trust, land trust issues and had only become available for sale and development within the last year and a half. So, I think there had been a potential that a lot of this could have been developed before, you know, with the previous phases. In terms of the setbacks, as is discussed, that Fish Wildlife Park, Fish Wildlife and Parks document is, provides recommendations for subdivision. Having gone through that document, it's a lot of generalities, so it's not necessarily a hard fact basis on how they arrive at the 200 feet, which I believe is why the subdivision rules at the bottom of the sections that were just discussed allows for the request of a variance by the developer. There are instances of variances having been granted in the city previously for this 200 foot setback. So, I don't think this is setting any sort of new precedent. They're each reviewed on their own on a basis of the application documents. And I think the other thing I just wanted to mention a little bit is the city council meeting, having been there, is that I think, from my own opinion, some of the underlying concerns with denying the conditional use permit and changing the zone request from RA1 to an R4 was partly related to the Senate bill that would basically remove the requirement for a conditional use permit for multifamily housing. And I think that concern had been if the order of how the hearings, so the zone change was being acted on prior to the conditional use permit. So, if the RA1 zone change was granted and the conditional use permit was denied, we, the developer, the owner would have an RA1 zone potentially could have waited for that Senate bill to come in and just have developed the multifamily. So, I think the denial of that RA1, from my opinion, having listened to the discussion, was probably more related to that than the stream setback. So, I may be reading into it differently than other people that were at that meeting, but from what I was hearing, I think that was a big part of the concern. Again, I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? Any further public comment? Hearing none, I'm going to close that portion of the item and would look for a motion from the board.
I move that the Calispel City Planning Commission adopt Staff Report KPP-25-04 as findings of fact and recommend to the Calispel City Council that the preliminary plat for North Meadows subdivision, along with the requested variances for the stream setback, the cul-de-sac length and the block length be approved subject to the listed conditions.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. It is now open for board discussion. Input?
So, curious, when was Belmar approved to that particular route with the setbacks? Do we have a date timeline? Do we know when that was?
You talk about that North Belmar area off to the, I'm not sure exactly, but it was there at least in the late 90s.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe late 80s he was even thinking. So, it would have predated that setback, but I think in, you know, in terms of that setback, there's a couple of things that I think that are really important because that's a lot of where the focus has been here.
Yeah.
Is that, you know, the starting point is that it's not a flat 200 foot setback, you know? And it was something that I read out of the ordinance too, but basically it uses 200 feet as a starting point, but allows for that reduction based on things such as a geotechnical report. And the allowance for that reduction, when city council adopted that regulation, it was really important to them that it not just be a flat 200 foot setback that would wipe out any development potential in certain areas, but they wanted to be able to look at each site and see if there's something particular about that site which would justify a reduction down in that. So, Stillwater Bend, for example, is one that was done. That was a much higher bank. There was a reduction from the 200 foot setback there based on specific geotech and then some remediation that was done because they'd farmed pretty much right up to the water's edge. This would be a similar type of thing, you know? The ordinance itself provides for that reduction based on primarily geotechnical information, but also the specifics of a site. So, it's not a flat 200 foot setback that's out there. Again, it's just the starting point that what you're looking at.
So, you had a follow-up on that. It's pretty unique when you look at the subdivision regs that a specific section has variance components to it. And that's because they didn't want that just being a strict rule. They wanted to be able to look at it on a case by case basis because the state doesn't have regulations. They're mentioned here Fish Wildlife and Park, but those are just recommendations. They're not, the state doesn't have any rules or regulation in that regard. There's Army Corps permits that they'd have to get. So, there's other measures, other permits that would have to take place within there. But, for example, neighboring communities just say setback top of bank. So, there also needs to be findings to, for 200 feet, right? Which would be the impaired stream and things like that. But when you're provided for means to reducing it and you can provide the findings to it, you know, planning, it's up to Planning Commission and the council to see if those are justified. But that's why those specific components were actually put in the rule. The rule is not just 200 feet. It's the applicant may also request a variance based off of sound scientific evidence and that's actually the city rule.
And so, by allowing this, we're not automatically setting precedent for other subdivisions to automatically get the variance, correct?
No, what's built in that regulation is to look at each given site on its own merits and potentially see that reduction. You know, part of what you're trying to do is balance out the sites. And in this particular site, for example, if you applied the full 200 feet, you wouldn't be able to get the road in and basically you've rendered the entire property undevelopable, which you can't really do in that situation. You need to provide for that. And that's why, as a general proposition, land use regulations, you know, zoning ordinances and subdivision regulations, not just City of Calispel, but nationwide, have provide for variance measures in there to try to account for kind of safety valves to allow when there's undue hardships based on specifics of a site, like the topography, for example. Allowing reasonable variances from that to allow development and that's what they've tried to do here.
Usually, when you're working with a huge blank slate, it's pretty easy. But when you're working with an infill site, it can become a little bit more tricky. And it's not always just situations like this. It even can be in urban, you know, when we talk about housing and housing infill. And so, the fact that it's got the infill component there, it's got a single access, it makes it a little difficult to meet that requirement at this point in time.
I guess where I'm struggling is like that west side is extraordinarily close to the river. I get that, or the creek, I get that there is a pretty steep bank there. It seems as though there could have been measures to improve that road alignment to make it less impactful, but that wasn't done and now we're just asking for forgiveness. That's what it feels like to me. You know, they may have lost a couple of lots in the process, but it would have been less impactful to the site. So, I'm just struggling a little bit, especially with that west side.
Are you talking about the four?
I'm talking about the extension of the public road and the four lots and then the connection to the-
Is that hammerhead required for fire or like that extension piece?
That extension coming up through there? Well, you know, I think part of what you'd need to recognize is, you know, this is an existing road and there's an existing road stub that comes up to here.
Right.
What you're seeing with this line coming down has been an annexed roadway reserve. And so, it's, and it's part of the transportation plan. It's shown on the transportation plan. There's really no other way that you can do that road alignment. You know, you're coming through here, like I said, again, this is an existing, the road pavement comes up just about to this property line right here. You know, you're coming through here, like I said, a- again, this is an existing, the the road pavement comes up just about to this property line right here. That would be an extension coming up here and then having that roadway coming down. The really, the only other thing that you can do with this would be to run that road right out the everybody's back door.
Well, I mean, yes, for a a couple of lots and then you could pull it up and away and and make it work with the topography a little bit better. I'm just. It just feels icky, and I know that's not a a good reason, but it it does, it. It rubs me the wrong way a little bit.
That's the the Seventh Street connection going north?
Um, yeah, I I believe it's seventh, I'm not sure what it lines up with there, but that's.
That was the original plan.
Original alignment and that was provided for, you know, again, with the original layout of of South Meadows. This essentially is just a a remnant from the um, original owner of that, he's he's still be simple owner.
And are, is this subdivision required to keep that connection open?
Through there, y- yes, well, I mean, it it, you know, it's.
It has to tie into it somehow.
Already shown in there as a roadway reserve that comes through there, so it it's it's part of the transportation plan, so they need to work with that. And part of the unique conditions they have is this is the only way to get into the property is right through there. Um, there's no other way that you can make that connection in. Um, but that's where it's called out in our transportation plan, that's kind of been on the books since the nineties of where that road should go. Yeah, it it'd be difficult to kind of wiggle it in a certain way, but I think that that location pretty much needs to be. Where it is, and I think that circumstances basically put it there.
So I guess one question specifically about the differentiation between the city rules of uh, cul-de-sac uh, length versus. The fire department's limits, um, is there historical context that you can let us know about why the difference is there?
Well, they they used to rely on those um, operating guidelines, um, and that's where it flowed through, so when you look at the original reason that that was in the subdivision regulations back in the day. Um, as fire code evolves, um, they tend to focus more on on fire hydrants and fire sprinkling, so. You know, something that would be analogous to that, the City of Kalispell used to have thirty five foot building heights uh, as a maximum, because that was the length of the ladder truck that could get up there, but obviously in cities you can have. You know, hundred story buildings, and it's because of type of construction, it's because of fire sprinkling. And again, as codes evolve, you would see that, so really the purpose of that six hundred feet isn't really in place. Um, but even if it were. You have variance provisions built into.
You know, even if it becomes pedestrian connection someday, but that is, you know, even if it becomes pedestrian connection someday, but. That is another north-south connection in a neighborhood that likely over time will become more dense with, you know, state law changes and such. But a a road crossing across the creek is an allowable encroachment as well, so that that's another reason that that alignment would be okay per our regulations, so.
So in terms of the roadway, I mean, just to highlight that this segment here is completely allowed. Under the regulations within that setback, it's mainly this little stretch right through here, uh, that that wouldn't be, so. Through here, uh, that that wouldn't be, so.
They can't do that legitimately. Uh, they wouldn't be bringing it in here.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that, um, it I have the utmost respect for Alpine Geotech for sure. Um, I'm more responding to like the lot design and the road alignment, and I think it could have been done better and in a in a more conscientious way to the site. That's all I'm saying. It it seems like too much emphasis was put into the number of lots and units, which I also understand from that perspective, but. Um, being conscientious to the the property is also important.
So under the current zoning, how many houses could be put on this lot with this usage more than forty-four?
Oh, definitely more than that, you know, in terms of the growth policy, you can get up to twelve. A- and you wouldn't be able to get this in there, but when you actually design and do the layouts and everything, but growth policy would allow up to twelve units per acre and they're only at three point six. Um, you'd, as a practical matter, be quite a bit less than that, um, but there's already quite a bit of a reduction. From what a maximum layout would be, um, because, you know, while they're asking it, again, part of it is when you look at the. The creek and how it meanders like this, it bounces that setback line kind of all over the place, and so through most of the site. They're respecting that to the extent that they possibly can. Um, it's mainly in this tighter area where that happens to be where the road comes in, that happens to be the tightest spot, that you see most of that that encroachment going on. Um, but yeah, I mean, if you developed out this whole area here, you could probably get quite a few many more lots in there, but we don't have a specific number for that.
So in general, quite a bit more?
In general, quite a bit more, yes.
The.
And and certainly, again, you know, it's just like, that I think that's one reason that they initially proposed uh, the multifamily in there is because trying to work around this regulation. Uh, was one reason they went in that direction, city council did not support the RA one, did support the R four. The R four, um, this is what you would have with it, it would have to come with that, and I think council fully recognized that when they uh, discussed changing it to R four at the council level.
So I generally don't enjoy hearsay, but I assume people, you were there at the city council meeting?
Yes.
The context of the three eighty-two or, you know, the planning Armageddon. Um, what uh, was that discussed? Ever everybody's pretty aware of that?
Yeah, it wasn't the only reason, but yes.
I would, it is in the Planning Commission's ability to amend it. An alignment if you feel like you can, I would say the other thing that was part of the consideration, you could see the lot layout or the road layout pretty much just lines up with the lot depth. That's really what it boils down to, um, so certainly it, the other thing we're trying to consider is. A road that the city has to own and maintain, we don't really want roads that have these drastic curves and things, and they also need to meet standards. As far as the curves, because we gotta plow them and maintain them, so it, straight lines are a little easier for the city to maintain and plow than. Roads with curves in them, especially when they have cars and things parked on them, so that's, you know, honestly, as far as maintenance, something to consider as well, but. Certainly, a a road could come in further to the south and kind of curve to the north, but that will. Need to be looked at as far as is there justification for it, is there a finding for it and um. Does it, does it make sense, so, but certainly within the the Planning Commission's uh, ability to to take a look at that.
I would add to that too, that. The engineering standards, um, we want the roads to intersect perpendicularly, not at an angle. Um, there's a a lot of reasons for that, and then also we like to have um, as much separation as we can between street intersections, so. You know, a typical street intersection uh, um, on a collector would be six hundred and sixty feet, that would be on the other side of the creek, so that. Again, it's just this, this provides as much spacing as possible from that other intersection. And uh, is as close as they can get to meeting city standards for the slot.
Besides the fact that you're required to have, I believe, twenty-five miles an hour minimum speed, which equates to two hundred. A two hundred foot radius.
Yeah.
On your street, so to get a two hundred foot radius curve and curve back, I don't see how that's working. Well, further discussion from the board? Nope, seeing none, uh, we'll close the discussion, and I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Pip Burke?
Aye.
Kate Walker?
Aye.
Joshua Borgart?
Aye.
Doug Kaufman?
Yes. And what would be the date on that, December first as well?
December first, right.
So that'll be for city council on December first, if anyone would like to join in that fray. And now I'll relinquish the gavel back.
Thank you. Give me the lipstick.
Uh, so next item on our agenda this evening is file K Z T A dash twenty-five dash zero two. City of Kalispell has initiated a petition for a zoning text amendment relating to the revocation of conditional use permits. Staff report, please.
Um, sorry, um, as you mentioned, this is a proposal from the City of Kalispell for a zoning text amendment to to the zoning ordinance to clarify the process for revocation of an issued uh, conditional use permit. Uh, current zoning regulations under chapter twenty-seven point three-three. Uh, detail the processing and review criteria for conditional use permits as well as the denial or violation of a conditional use permit. Uh, this amendment would clarify the process for revocation of an issued conditional use permit. Uh, as a general proposition, the Kalispell zoning ordinance, like most zoning ordinances, uh, creates zoning districts on an official map. Now, within those districts, there are uses allowed by right and uses allowed by through a conditional use permit. Uh, uses allowed by right are typically the uses you would expect in a neighborhood, such a single-family house in this in a residential zone. Uh, those uses uh, do not require any special land use process. Conditionally permitted uses, on the other hand, are not guaranteed uses, they're u- usually uses with a greater impact on the surrounding neighborhood than is normally expected. They are issued as a matter of grace by a public hear, after a public hearing and a determination by city council. Uh, usually with certain conditions to mitigate the increased impacts. Uh, since the issuance of a conditional use permit is a matter of grace, uh, they are typically revocable. Uh, the Kalispell zoning ordinance contain language prior to two thousand and eight, uh, which specifically provided for the revocation of a permit. Uh, during the course of a comprehensive update to the ordinance, the specific language was replaced with more general language. Intended to incorporate a wide range of potential action if a property was not being used in compliance with this conditional use permit, uh, including revocation. Leaving the process and criteria as general, uh, as in the current ordinance can present difficulties in trying to address situations that may be perceived to be out of compliance. Uh, this text amendment is intended to provide clarity in those situations by A, uh, clearly stating that a conditional use permit can be revoked. B, providing a method of notifying the owner and user of the property. Uh, C, establishing the city council as the forum utilizing its standard procedures. Uh, D, uh, allowing for an appeal to the court system, E, providing criteria for the council's consideration, N, F. Uh, allowing a process of reinstatement if the property is brought into compliance, uh, avoiding the conditional use permit after a year if the property is not brought into compliance. Uh, it also provides for review when a new owner, let's say, or user intends to continue to use a property under an existing conditional use permit. Um, so the language that was put together uh, was taken in part from the original language that was in the Kalispell zoning ordinance up until fairly recently. Um, similar language was in the Whitefish and is in the Whitefish ordinance, uh, as well as the Flathead County ordinance, uh, we also looked at the zoning ordinances for Great Falls and Helena. And putting this together, and just stepping through the changes, um, you know, again, sub one here is basically making it clear that a C U P is is revocable. Uh, sub two uh, sets out the notice that the city would provide, uh, kind of identifying exactly what the issues are being uh, providing for a fifteen day period and then setting a hearing date. Uh, sub three uh, kind of lays out the process, the typical hearing process, uh, and referring to the criteria that would be used. Uh, and would also allow for that appeal to district court within thirty days, which is the typical window that you would see for appeals from city council action. Uh, the next step is really looking at what the specific criteria would be, um, we need to make a finding, at least one of these findings, that the information. That was provided um, was uh, false or inaccurate, whether deliberate or unintentional. Uh, and that the misrepresentation was material to the city's decision to grant the conditional use permit. Um, or that the development or use of the property is not in compliance with the application submitted as part of the original C U P. Or that the development or use of the property is not in compliance with the condition or some other requirement of the conditional use permit. Um, then we would also have uh, sub five, uh, C P is a matter of grace, and so is a revocation, so it's kind of clarifying that situation. Uh, sub six then allows for the reinstatement, um, once the violations would be corrected. Uh, there were a few other sections that we did to kind of to uh. I guess flow with that, uh, those provisions uh, throughout the remainder of that chapter. Uh, one is providing that a C P doesn't run with the land, uh, provides for new users to submit a renewal application and uh, a new C P if there are material changes in what that new user wants to do. And again, that's just kind of carrying those changes through, um, in both of these sections through here. Uh, with that, staff would recommend that the Kalispell Planning Commission adopt staff report K Z T A twenty-five oh two as findings of fact. And recommend to the Kalispell City Council that the proposed zoning text amendment be adopted as presented and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, PJ. Any questions for staff?
Do you have a, I was just looking back at Northview's application for a C U P, but I was looking at specific requirements on the C U P application, and is it? What I'm wondering is if it, as part of this. Opportunity for revocation or ability for revocation, are there improvements that can be made to the application? That takes some of the ambiguity out of it, that kind of.
Yeah, there's some.
Take care of issues that may be outstanding?
With, yeah, certainly to some degree, I mean, and and we've incorporated some of the things that you would see already here previously, but. If this is adopted ultimately by city council, we would update our our applications to bring some of that stuff out.
Okay.
Also, whenever a conditional use permit is granted by a city council, kind of like an ordinance or something, the uh, they do a grant of conditional use to get, that goes on. The property that has the conditions and stuff, so language from this would make its way into that grant of conditional use as well, so that it would be clear. Of what the requirements of the city were, so.
So. There is no one typical conditional use, right? W- we're in the in the zoning ordinance, there are permitted uses on properties and there are conditional uses. So this relates to a conditional use within a zone, so it's not like you can say. Typically, to date, any multifamily has come through the conditional use permit process because it is conditionally allowed in most zones. So this is related to any of those conditional uses that are listed in the in the zoning ordinance?
It'd be related to any conditional use, yes.
Bit of nuances there, some things obviously are changing with about what's conditionally permitted use and what's not, so multifamily, for example, in commercial zones is a permitted use now. So even old conditional use permits are permitted uses, and any future ones won't even require conditional use permits, so there'll be less of those to begin with in in that regard. And housing strategies, one came up earlier with townhouses and such, depending on how that council proceeds with that, even townhouses likely would become a permitted use if that's a council or the direction the council in, um. So there's a lot of things, it'll it'll typically boil down to uses, you know, paint shops and neighborhoods and things of that nature where where these would apply, but um. Yeah, I think.
And typically, in our, the way we have set up and interpreted our zoning is that. If it says R three, their allowed uses are pretty standard in R three, and then we have. Well, if it's a little bit different than what is a standard use and we want the neighbors to know, we go through a conditional use permit. Process because it allows for a public hearing, right?
Right, yeah, it's typically looking at things that have that little higher impacts, like the R three example that you had there. You know, now with ADUs and stuff, it's kind of muddled, but traditionally, R three was a single-family zone. And that's why a conditional use permit would be required to have a two-unit townhome because it's not typically the single-family home. Whereas R four was a duplex-based zone with two families, so you would kind of expect to have the two side by side, and that's why two-unit townhomes are permitted in the R four. So I mean, that kind of illustrates there, but you, yeah, usually you're looking at things with a much higher impact than you would expect for the typical use in the zone to have a C U P.
And as the wording says, it allows us to put conditions on that use.
Or deny.
Or deny, but it allows for some kind of mitigation of of a use that is not, that doesn't meet the strict growth policy requirements of a certain zone.
Correct, in a in a different way, it's almost like we were talking about earlier, in a weird way, you're providing a variance to the zone to allow for a use that otherwise wouldn't be permitted there. Based on the fact that you committed. there, based on the fact that you can mitigate its impacts, and that's what you use a conditional use permit process for. And really what this is, is we just didn't have a process lined out for when there is violations of a CUP, how we would treat that, and that's what this would do. Certainly, it's a process used in other cities, other municipalities across the nation, or something similar, so we just want to make sure it's outlined, so that we have a process to go forward if there are violations on any conditional use permits in the future.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Kate's looking pensive.
Thank you. It's okay, go ahead.
Seeing no more questions from the commission, I will open this up for public comment. If you'd like to step to the podium, state your name and address, and tell us what you're thinking.
Hello, my name is Colton Little, 3195 Montana Highway 206, Clemmie Falls, Montana. Commissioners, I'm here today because I'm concerned with the implications, and I have questions, and I'm wondering what this could mean in the context of why we are reviewing conditional use permits and the process to take them back. As you likely know, the city did, or members of the city council and the community tried to go through a process to remove the conditional use permit for the Flathead Warming Center, and in the context of that, it is my concern that if this applies to previously issued conditional use permits, that this would pave the way to avoid the US District Court Missoula's finding that Kalispell's actions were illegal, and in removing that, and would allow us to revisit that, which I do not believe we should, on its moral grounds. Now, we're standing also in the context of the recent election, and the, what I think is sort of a referendum on what the council has done with the previous mayor and with the new mayor-elect. As you might know, that new mayor-elect was a strong opponent of that attempt to remove the CUP, and has been a voice of support for addressing homelessness and housing issues in the city and county. And I think it's really important that we revisit this conversation because there has been such a great animosity against homeless people and people who are struggling in the county, and this new referendum, to me, says that we will no longer tolerate the suffering of our neighbors, and we will not accept politics that says they are invisible. Specifically in my mind, what I think of is a moment where the mayor of our city, or the Mayor Johnson, was in US District Court Missoula, and the Judge Dana Christensen asked, along the lines of, people need to breathe, they need to eat, they need to drink water, and they need somewhere to sleep, and our mayor said that, when asked, where will they sleep, they will find a piece, a place within shrubbery, bushes, somewhere on public property that's discreet, where they can sleep where they're not seen, according to the Daily Montanian. And this is a response that reveals a clear and obvious moral failing on our part and a lack of understanding for our neighbors. Do we consign our brothers and sisters to places of hiding under bushes and in the shadows? Do we leave them unseen and uncared for? That is not the promise I remember, that neighbors and people are supposed to take care of each other. So, when we think of this in the context of Warming Center, I request that we visit the question of whether or not this could mean that we can revoke previously issued CUPs, or if this is only CUPs being issued going forward, because we can't allow our neighbors to be thrown out on the streets, and we can't allow this to go unaddressed in our city or anywhere. So, in my test, my, the core of my testimony is this, to the count, to the commission and any others who are listening, is to let us remember the voice of the people in electing a mayor who, the citizen, in that, the citizens have declared that we are moving towards a new direction of empathy and service and justice, and to honor the truth that no law, zoning code, or permit revocation could substitute our humanity and the dignity that we should have towards each other, and that when one of us is vulnerable, we are all vulnerable, and when one of us is hidden away, we are all losing our own light. Injustice anywhere is a threat to injustice everywhere. To revoke a permit that shelters the needy, to hide them in shrubbery where they cannot be seen, that is injustice. To change a permit basis to evade a court ruling, that is injustice, but to choose instead to have compassion, openness, and care for dignity and fairness, that is justice. So, please, let this commission and this council hear the people's voices and to walk in the direction of justice, so that our city cannot just survive, but thrive. Let us build a city where no one must sleep unseen, but instead, one where we care for each other, we see each other and lift each other up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Any other public comment?
My name is Tanya Horn, and I'm the Director of the Flathead Warming Center. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight about the proposed zoning amendment that would let Kalispell City Council revoke conditional use permits. The Planning Commission should not adopt the proposed amendment. This proposed amendment would give the city council the power to take away a conditional use permit that has already been granted. These are permits that people rely on to run their businesses and nonprofits. Conditional use permits are designed to provide predictability, not just for small nonprofits or businesses, but for projects of every size, from local shops to major developments. What unites all these ventures is that, once permitted is, once a permit is granted, they can depend on it to confidently invest thousands or even millions of dollars. If a permit can easily, can be easily revoked, banks won't lend, and builders won't build. Much of the city's economic vitality depends on the stability these permits provide. If the reliability disappears, the city's economic engine could come to a sudden halt, replaced by uncertainty and hesitation. That's not how a fair or dependable permitting system should function. Even worse, the amendment says that the city could revoke a permit if it decides that something in the application was inaccurate. That's a dangerous idea. I personally know what it's like to be wrongfully accused of being inaccurate. That accusation can be used as a weapon. The amendment would allow the city to go back years later, dig through old applications, and look for excuses to punish people or uses that they don't like or don't agree with. That would make every permit holder live in fear that politics could take away their right to operate. No business or nonprofit could feel secure because a change in leadership or public opinion could put their livelihoods and investments at risk. Let me also be clear about something else. If this amendment is really about finding a new way to revoke the Warming Center's conditional use permit, we will fight back. The city has already tried that once. We went to federal court, and we stood up for our mission and our rights, and we prevailed. We hope we won't have to do that again, but if this amendment becomes a backdoor attempt to undo the settlement or target our work, we will not hesitate to return to court. I understand that the city may want to amend its conditional use permit process in response to our lawsuit, but this amendment isn't the way to go. Given that this amendment is in response to our lawsuit, we and our lawyers at the Institute for Justice would be happy to work with you on a revised amendment. The Flathead Warming Center serves people who have nowhere else to go. We are a part of this community. We have met every condition of, that the city required of us, and we continue to operate responsibly and safely. What we ask in return is simple, is simple: stability, fairness, and respect for the rule of law. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Horn.
Kenny Austin, Liberty Street, Kalispell. I had no intention of speaking tonight. I am 100% for you doing this and updating and revising, making it more clear. Had this been the way it was prior to the Warming Center filing suit, they wouldn't have been able to do that, so this will hopefully help us as a city not to have to do frivolous lawsuits, and I would appreciate you approving it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Are you guys able to hear me okay? All right, thank you. So, my name is Arthur Fratheim. I live at 249th Street East here in town, and this is actually my first time speaking before the planning board. And I am speaking, I would like to oppose this proposed amendment that is before the commission. The speakers before, that came before me have all spoken on the assumption that this is targeted against the Warming Center, and we either did not want the commission to target the Warming Center, or were in favor of targeting the Warming Center. I don't know what actually motivated this, or the timing, so I'm not going to speak to that, but I do think there are some serious economic and constitutional issues with this proposed language. So, if this proposal, and I'm not sure, because I did go and, I did go and read the pact, and thank you for having this up on the board, if this proposal is retroactive, that means if it makes all the conditional use permits that have been issued under the old rules revocable under the new rules, or if this would create essentially two classes of conditional use permit holders, some of whom would have permits that were subject to the old rules, and then some of them would be revocable under these new rules. I think either way, that the commission handles it is going to raise significant problems. So, if we make it retroactive, not only is that, you know, like you said, people said earlier, you know, obviously it's going back on the settlement, it's, you know, it's asking for another lawsuit, it's spending another several months of the council's time on revisiting previous issues, and potentially revisiting for any holder of a conditional use permit, not just the Warming Center, but that could be Samaritan House, it could be the people we approved today to have a conditional use permit. On the other hand, if it's not retroactive, and if all the new conditional use permits are revocable, but the old ones aren't, then it creates a problem. If you are buying a property that has a conditional use permit on it, then it's going to be your job, or the job of whoever does title insurance, to go and research and see, okay, is this the old-style conditional use permit, is this a new-style conditional use permit? So, it's another sort of burden on anyone who has to deal with that. I also think that the, like it was, I think, I think one of the previous commentators mentioned it, I think when we talk about having the permit be revocable on any finding of fact, which, again, the council doesn't necess, I mean, it's a political body, a government owned body, doesn't necessarily have the sort of specialized knowledge that we have here, and we're going directly to council, so if they're just basing that on public comments, I mean, we aren't sworn, we can be wrong, you know, it's, we're giving our opinions, we're not giving facts necessarily. And I'd also like to say that I think the review process raises some concerns, how it's mentioned, so it would put the burden on whoever owns a conditional use permit, so that could be a developer, that could be a homeowner, it could be, you know, anybody, business, to prove that they are not in violation. Potentially, somebody could be hauled in front of the council any number of times to prove they aren't in violation, and to answer, you know, regard, it'll be a political decision on the council's part, whether they want to haul someone, and it wouldn't necessarily, there's no real, I mean, the standards, I know they're trying to make them more clear, but, but I still think there's a lot of leeway. And I think that, again, there's no, there is a judicial remedy, if you get wrongly revoked, you can go to the district court, but there would not be a remedy if you're just being, you know, potentially, if you're being harassed, if you're being brought into many times, there's not, there's no mechanism where the city council or where a court could say, hey, we've brought this particular objection forward multiple times, it's becoming, like the previous commenter said, it's becoming frivolous, and, and we're not going to entertain it any longer. And then the other issue is about the transfer of permits, or specifically making them not transferable. I'm not sure if that covers inheritance, like if your parents have a conditional use permit on their property, they die, it transfers to you, do you have to reapply? If there's, you know, if there's two spouses, one of them dies, or they divorce, and it's given to one spouse in the divorce settlement, or, but, but even, even if you would just consider that to apply to sales, I am not sure why, if the city and the planning board and the council considers a use to be legitimate, why it would cease to be legitimate just because the property's been sold. I mean, if I have a neighbor, and they're doing something with their property, you know, they're rolling a, I don't know, bowling alley with it, and then they sell it to somebody else who uses a bowling alley, that's the same, right? So, I don't see why there should be an automatic review, just because there's been a transfer of ownership. And I also think this, this thing is not going to really hit the Warming Center or other shelters, I think this is going to affect businesses a lot. You know, usually, you know, you don't sell a homeless shelter, I mean, it's, it's not a for-profit thing, but people do routinely sell businesses. And I think that, again, there's a question, this is, again, something I'm not sure about, it seems vague to me, whether the research to determine whether a conditional use permit will go forward or will not go forward after a sale, I don't know if that's done before the sale or after the sale. If it's done before the sale, then you have to invest a significant amount of time, and then if you have a lawyer or something, money into, before you can make that sale, into researching and asking the board and asking the council whether you're going to be able to have that. I'm thinking if you're purchasing a business, not just the physical property, but like the whole business, so that's, adds a significant cost to somebody who's just interested in buying a business. On the other hand, if you put it on the, if you say you do the conditional use permit afterwards, then, the reaplication, then that raises the problem that you're buying with a lot of uncertainty. I don't think, if I wanted to, you know, again, hypothetically, if I want to buy a restaurant, and I need a, you know, it has a conditional use permit to be a restaurant in that area, to be a corner store, to be, you know, a housing development or whatever, and when I buy it, I don't know whether I can use it for its intended use or not, I'm a lot less willing to buy, and I think it creates this uncertainty, I think, like, I don't, it's buying a pig in a poke. And then the final thing I'm concerned about is that this is a potential inducement or And then the final thing I'm concerned about is that this is a potential inducement, or an opportunity for corruption. I don't think there's anyone in this room, or anyone on the, the current Kalispell City Council or staff, that, that would take a bribe, but if this goes into the ordinance, it's, it's going to stay there forever unless it's repealed. And when you look at the, the politics of, you know, especially like, I'm thinking of big city like Chicago, but, but even some small towns, there's a culture that when you want something from the Council, or you want something from the Planning Board, there's a quid pro quo. Again, we don't have that here, I want to keep it that way, that we don't have that here. But I think when you have, people have to continually come and continually request new conditional use permits, or are continually at threat, they can be extorted, I just think that's a sort of incentive that we don't want to do. I also noticed that the Planning Board, at least either this evening or the next work session, is going to be working to adopt a law, the, the new Montana Land Use Law, which moves away from planning on the basis of individual approvals to planning and making a general plan, and, and adhering to that plan. And, and I think that if this is adopted, it really goes against the spirit of that, because this would be saying, going and saying that, you know, is, at the same time that the Council is, is going to be giving up the power, excuse me, the, the power to individually approve lots, it's also getting the, taking the power to individually deny permits that they've already granted. And I know those are separate issues, but, but I think it's, it's really going in the, the opposite direction of where we're going as a city and state on, on other matters. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rose Askbig, I live at 211 Liberty Street. I'm a very black and white person, I know a lot of people apply for CUPs, it's basically a permission slip with conditions. I like the changes, I think with the growth of Kalispell, we need to be looking at a lot of our permits and a lot of the things that are happening, so that we can be up to code with everybody else, and I think if people are afraid of it, then they're probably doing something wrong. I love it, I think it's great. Thank you for the time you guys have put into it.
Thank you.
Good evening. Branton Horn, 92 Stillwater River Trail, Whitefish. I want to preface this by saying that my comments do not represent the Flathead Warming Center, but this is an issue that's very, it's very personal to me. I watched my wife, Tanya, and I watched the Flathead Warming Center go through an extremely painful and unfair process. This was a process that was, from the outset, intended to destroy the rights of the Warming Center. All the while, the City of Kalispell never accused them of any wrongdoing, never accused them of breaking the law. Now, how does that, how's that affect what we're talking about now, going forward? Well, we got to look at the proposed text amendment, and what I saw was that the hearing, is that the right word? It was such an ad hoc, the, the process that the city is proposing for the revocation of conditional use permits appears to be very, very different from the one that was just tried and rejected. The same process of accepting unvetted, unworn complaints about an issue, they said it's only public comment, was the only way information we brought in, no request for evidence, no ability to cross-examine any witness or any comment. That really mirrors a lot of the issues that the Flathead Warming Center saw. The Council, in their decision to revoke the Flathead Warming Center's conditional use permit, they relied upon unvetted complaints, complaints that had unknown veracity, they never asked for evidence, they never asked for any proof, they were literally able to, in this case, they were, they voted to revoke the Flathead Warming Center's conditional use permit, effectively destroying the Flathead Warming Center with zero evidence. And here's the problem, if this goes through, any new conditional use permit could be destroyed with zero evidence. This was something I didn't know coming into this, till we read the, the text amendment, I'm flabbergasted, that they would take the same standard, that will not ask for evidence, we will not give an opportunity for cross-exam. If 20 people come up and say, this place is terrible, we want it gone, and five people on the Council want it gone, it's gone, millions of dollars, whatever they have invested is gone. That is not the way this country works. Due process is not allowed for in this, and I would have assumed, I thought the folks on the City Council were smart enough to add in some process, it's not there. Oh yeah, sure, you, you can appeal at the end, at least that's something that the Warming Center didn't have, when the City Council went after the Flathead Warming Center, there is no, no opportunity for appeal. Folks are surprised the Warming Center sued, of course they sued, they have no, nothing else to do, that was the end of it. Now, if you move forward with this, you're inviting lawsuit after lawsuit after lawsuit after lawsuit. Anyone can be threatened, anything, any, the folks with the, what was the name of the first development that went through, you can go through and look at every, any word in their application, anything that they submitted, not just in the conditions, in the preface letter, in the background. Oh, well, we don't like this, you can go back for years, there's no end on it. That's what happened with the Warming Center. The Warming Center became a political football, folks in town decided they didn't like low-barrier shelters, so they said, let's go after the permit. This was politics, this wasn't land use. And if you push this forward, you're inviting politics to get into land use decisions, and it's a bad idea. Again, what we're talking about tonight isn't the Warming Center. The Warming Center was an example, it's an example of what goes wrong, and you should be very scared of pushing this thing forward. Now, of course, at the end of the day, the Warming Center did reach a settlement with the city, the settlement restored the CUP, the settlement paid for both sides, the city paid both sides of the legal bill, they paid for this mistake. And the city even apologized to my wife, but the experience left lasting damage, it's still in this community. Had, the folks in the community had been able to rely upon a CUP, this is something that's unassailable, unattackable, it runs with the land, as the city code said it does, we wouldn't be having this conversation, and this animosity and this angst wouldn't be here. You move this forward, you're inviting more trouble. So the city's original code, as was reiterated in the city's settlement with the Flathead Warming Center, is very clear. Conditional use permit shall run with the lot. It runs with the lot, with the building, with the structure, and its use shall not be affected by changes in ownership. You get the conditional use permit, you're going to start a homeless shelter, you're going to build some condos, whatever it is you're going to do, you're going to open a restaurant, you can rely on it, you can take it to the bank. You can't take this to the bank now, what bank is going to loan on, well, you know, if, if you messed up, you know, one word, one sentence, made some promise that was unintended, unintended or not, that was in there. If, if there's a, a mistake made in the application materials, unintended or not, you can come after it. This is bad, it's got to end. You know, I had a conversation not long ago, kind of hypothesizing that this may came, may come up, with a commercial banker at a big bank in town, won't name, won't name any of that, but he was very concerned, that this is, this is real, I mean, where do we go, how does this affect title insurance? How does this affect loan closings? It's a big deal, it's, and, and all of this, the city's bringing all of this together because it's a political football, because they want to go after the Flathead Warming Center. Oh, well, if we just had this, or that, or the other thing, we could have felt better we could have done what we wanted to do with the Warming, no you couldn't. But they're impacting every other conditional use permit in the city, going down the road for, for all time, because they want to get to the Warming Center? This is politics, this is not land use, and you need to end it. I urge you, end it. We don't want to relitigate this in a month in front of the city. It should stop now, keep it out of the papers, make it go away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Ron Gerson, live at 94th Avenue East here in Kalispell, and just for reasons of disclosure, I'm the Chair of the Flathead Democratic Party, and I'm a Board Member of Valley Neighbors, neither one of which is pertinent to my presentation this evening, but I thought I'd say it. I have spent 55 years in business, internationally, nationally, and the one thing I can tell you, that both at a macroeconomic level and a microeconomic level, is that the biggest thing that impacts on business is uncertainty, okay? You are a Planning Commission, and I realize that you occupy yourselves with a lot of very specific, particular applications, but I think you also have a view of the general planning environment in, in Kalispell and in Flathead County. The, including the, the, the business people themselves, will be hesitant to invest and to develop and grow in our community because of this. Uncertainty is a killer to growth, okay? And, and, and economics in general. So please, consider that when you do this, this is opening a can of worms, that, whether it's political or not, it's a can of worms that will not be, be delivering fish for Kalispell. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Any further public comment? Last chance. Seeing no further comment, I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this item, and look to the Board for a motion.
I move that the Kalispell City Planning Commission adopt the findings and staff report KT, sorry, KZTA-25-02, and recommend to the Kalispell City Council that the proposed amendment be adopted as provided herein.
I'll second. Moved and seconded, do we have Board discussion?
I was wondering, do we know what the mechanism is for review? Like what kicks that off, or, like, you know, what brings that before the plant, you know, the Planning Department for review?
Okay, so, you know, a couple things, I guess, to address that question is, first of all, you know, there are three specific criteria that you'd have to find. You know, one is that, you know, that there's some kind of misrepresentation, and I think what's highlighted in here too, is it's, it's not simply like one word buried in something, but it's got to be material to the city's decision to grant the conditional use permit, that there was something that was misrepresented, whether it was an intentional lie or, or not, that was of real basis to the city's decision to grant a conditional use permit. Or that something isn't in compliance with the application that was submitted with the, with the original approval, or that there was a condition that was violated in that. So that would be the starting point, if it became apparent that there was something that was out there, the same way that, you know, our department gets complaints on tall weeds and grass, or junk vehicles, or, you know, illegal uses that are out there, if it comes to the city's attention that there's something that's going on that's in violation of what that conditional use permit would be, then you would go to where this written notice is sent out. That written notice would identify whatever the city believes to be in violation, basically saying that it needs to be brought into compliance, and sets that hearing date, which would be in front of Council. When you look at Sub 3, this is where it's talking about that procedure there, so it says the City Council would be that hearing body, and would follow its standard hearing procedures, which are all laid out in its own separate rules of procedure, including hearing from the conditional use permit holder, any witnesses that would be coming forward through public comment. And in order to revoke that, they'd have to make one of those findings, established by a preponderance of the evidence. So a preponderance of the evidence is the typical standard that you see in a civil case, where it's more likely than not in one direction or the other. So it's introducing a standard of, of review, that's part of that, and then again, allowing that appeal within 30 days to District Court. So what this is doing is kind of outlining that process that's there. You know, it's, it's, became apparent that there were certain things within our ordinance that should be highlighted and spelled out, and that brings certainty to not just the city, but to, you know, you know, any conditional use permit holder out there as to what that process would be, you would know exactly what that process would be as you're moving forward. It's getting a little bit off the question, but I, I would also say that, you know, in terms of, of uncertainty that's out there, you know, the flip's also true, you know, if City Council is looking at a conditional use permit, and they can't, you know, if there's something that's in front of them that they're worried might be potentially misrepresented, or they're worried about whether or not something's going to be in compliance, they're probably going to be less likely to grant the CUP in the first place. So if you're kind of looking at some of the, the impact on potential CUP holders, or existing CUP holders, having these parameters in place is good for everybody. I think that was one of the issues that was brought up through the process that we went through, is having those parameters that everybody can rely on is better than having it being silent. I think it was the city's position through this whole thing, that revocation of CUPs isn't something that just Kalispell was doing, or just that the City Council wanted to do, but it's something that's allowed all across the country. That's why, you know, we looked at some of these other cities in the state, and what their procedures are, and what their criteria are for when we're going through this, and we wanted to add that certainty into this. And, and again, it's not just about, you know, it's not about creating some kind of a tool for the city to go after people, it's also to provide protection for the people that are out there, so that you can know exactly what those criteria are, what those procedures are, as you're going into getting a CUP, or if a situation comes up that you're trying to revoke it. So anyway, I hope that answers your question, probably went a little beyond what you were talking about.
Yeah, because the key is that a conditional use permit is issued by grace from the Council. So I, I think that's the key, and can we enforce the conditions? And the concern, which it's very common for us to follow up any issue with text amendments, to address any potential holes we see in our ordinance, to address things that, as they come up, we do it on a yearly basis, we always do text amendments, this has nothing to do with the Warming Center, we're addressing the process that has come up, actually was brought up, that we didn't have a process that went through with the Warming Center, this is a process, this is a process, other communities are using, nationally it's used. So, you know, municipalities, because it's a matter of grace, use a number of tools, some cities, right off the bat, when they issue, will say seven years max, and it's gone, it's seven years, and they get a re-review, so it's just not an automatic. and it's gone. It's seven years, and they get a re-review. So it's just not an automatic twenty-five, thirty years, cuz that automatically sets up a renewal in seven years. So rather than propose something like that, this is what other municipalities in Mon- Montana are using generally. It's what the city of Kalispell has had in its ordinance in the past. So even old CUPs were subject to an ordinance very similar to this, not that long ago. So um, state laws still provides it. The city still has, you know, the fact that the city council issues it by matter of grace. The city council puts together the zoning, zoning ordinance, which is allowed for by state laws, state enabling laws. So all that kind of trickles down. This just makes it clear to an applicant what the process would be um for a revocation process, cuz that was one of the questions that had come up multiple times. So really, it's just trying to add clarity to what a city process could look like in regards to a conditional use permit. So I guess the question to Planning Commission would be if, say, it's a neighborhood commercial zone and the city issues a conditional use permit for a bar, and there's conditions. The bar is open till two or three in the morning all the time. There's fights. There's calls by the cops. It's just on and on and on. Should the council or plant, the council have the ability to enforce that conditional use permit? Absolutely, they should. Um, that's just an example. At a paint shop, you know, fumes coming from, the conditions are that you have to be painting in the building. Um, no outdoor painting, no outdoor storage. If they're violating that, should the council have the ability to look at that and either correct it or revoke it if need be? Absolutely. Otherwise, our opinion or staff's opinion would be if, if we don't have this process in place to enforce a conditional use permit, then we shouldn't have conditional use permits at all, and you just place the uses in the appropriate zone to begin with, and that would be the only other way. Um, so like I said, a conditional use permit's a matter of grace. You're trying to address neighborhood compatibility. If in any case that's not being met, the city has to have the ability to enforce it, which in this case, this set up the process to do that, which is clarity for an applicant as well, which wasn't there before.
So can you address the retroactive issue?
So I think that the city's position has been that you've always been able to revoke a conditional use permit. That, that was much clearer in the language that we had in two thousand eight, um, when that, there was a, a major rewrite to the zoning ordinance to try to streamline things and try to take out some of the red tape and just kind of make things a little simpler when it went forward. And the decision was made at that time to just kind of have this general language, because it was kind of accepted that revocation is one of the tools. Uh, you could take somebody into court for violating the terms of the permit, basically as, as a civil infraction, um, like you could for any zoning violation that would be out there. But the idea was, instead of having a lot of information in there on different processes that you could take, take it through, you would rely on what the generally accepted practices are as far as injunctions, as far as, you know, again, a civil citation or a revocation. So in retrospect, we probably should have had even more uh parameters as to what the process would be to follow that. So I don't think that this really changes anything in that regard about potential revocations. It's always been something that's been in there. What was lacking was putting in that certainty, again, for everybody, both the city and for the applicants and for the neighborhood, as to what that process should be. And I think that that's what we've learned from this, is that there's things that we need to put in there. We're trying to learn from other cities about how they do things. I would note that this was put together in conjunction with the city attorney's office. And so it's, it's a real effort to try to put some certainty into what was somewhat of an uncertain process.
Thank you, PJ.
So I just wanna like verbalize it so it's clear. Other cities uh within the United States do this um process. But for the last ten years, we just, or maybe even twenty, we've just kind of left it open, assuming, and that's the difference between uh their policies and our, this particular policy, correct?
That, um, I think I understand what you're saying with that. It's, it is something that's-
Making it up because we're angry.
We're not making it up because we're angry. It's, it's, it's a process that's out there. I think it got highlighted that it was something that was missing in our ordinance. And as Jared mentioned, we do that every about five, six years anyway. You know, we look at things that, that you think you're, are set up well in there, but in practice, maybe um aren't as smooth as you'd want, and you try to put things to, to correct that. So, so doing general zoning updates are things that we do, do all the time. You know, this is a process out there, again, that, you know, we kind of borrowed from other communities that are out there. Uh, the main ones in, in Montana were Helena and Great Falls. The language that we had, because we're all under the same um planning department back uh pre-two thousand, uh, Whitefish's language and Platte County's language is almost identical to what we had until two thousand eight. As Jared mentioned, different cities take it things differently. I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's kind of part of the general law around planning that a conditional use permit is something that's a matter of grace. It's not like uh getting a single-family housing permit in a single-family zone. It's something that you need to come in, you go through the process for, and you could potentially be, be denied for. But revocations of that are, are part to that general process. Some communities take it through, like Jared was talking about, about every seven years, you have to come in and you have to basically get renewed uh through the, the public hearing process and, and city council. That's not what we're proposing here, and that's not what, um, what most cities, at least that I saw in Montana, would do. But it's, it's an available route that could be out there. Um, we did include some of the language about, um, you know, renewals that were becoming through, and basically what we're saying here would be that, you know, if there's a new user or less senior operator that wants to continue it, basically, they just need to come in for an administrative review. It's not a full public hearing and just verify that the terms and conditions, the original grant, are what they're gonna do. And if they're coming in and they're saying, yeah, I like what this person did, but, you know, I've got this new way that I want to do it, or I want to expand a little bit, then that's why the second part comes in, saying if material changes relate to the use of the property are proposed, then they need to reapply at that point. So um, it's an opportunity to make sure that things are up to snuff in, in that manner. But, you know, this would, this would come up, um, you know, i- i- you know, CUPs are typically in a commercial context, and doing those type of title searches and everything are, are part of what's in there. Uh, it's a standard part of what they would do as, as far as a property sale or a new lease.
It's not, it's not an unknown from a lending perspective?
No, it wouldn't be an unknown from that perspective either. Um, and typically, there's buy-sells. Um, we work with people all the time. Uh, they're looking at purchasing a property, whether it's a CUP or not, um, and there'd be a buy-sell in place. Most of the subdivisions you have in come, coming in front of you are people that don't own the property at the time, but they've entered into a buy-sell subject to city approval on um getting a preliminary plat approval or annexation, or whatever this is coming in front of, of the city for approval.
So a bar that has uh rules to close at ten o'clock, and somehow they have fights at ten-twenty outside? That relationship is, there's no legal scenario where somebody says, hey, the, the police can't do anything about this business, but to some extent, the CUP rules suggest that ten o'clock is the time, and we've noted that uh we have some evidences of maybe the business being open past that particular time. That's what could also kick off something like this?
It, yeah, it could. I mean, certainly, you know, it's like if there's a condition that says that it needs to be closed at, at ten o'clock, and they're open to eleven or twelve or one, then y- you would think that the city should have the ability to go in and say, no, you should be closing at ten. That's what your CUP-
And that's not what the police are for. The police are for other things, right?
Police are for other things with that, so.
Not this.
So that, that would be an example. I, I, you know, i- it's kind of on both sides. I mean, you, you want to be able to have the city to have the ability to make sure that somebody's operating the way that it's supposed to operate in compliance with what's, what is there. You know, it's not a, this isn't a tool to just yank an approval if somebody's in full compliance with all those things. If they don't meet those criteria uh that we talked about before, about a material misrepresentation as they were getting their initial approval, or that they're not in compliance with the conditions or, or what was submitted. I think most people would say that, that, yeah, if somebody comes in and, you know, in this case, um, y- you know, it was like the ten o'clock time, and that was creating problems, um, they're not in compliance with the permit, they should either bring it into compliance or, or revoke the permit.
Which this has a process that we would have to notify them, and they have fifteen days to come into compliance as well, which that wasn't there before as well. This sets up a notice period that would allow that. So the city has the burden, the finding, to prove that you're actually not in compliance as well. That, you know, so the city has that burden and has to make that finding, at which point they can correct that. So, um, yeah, th- this would just set up the process where in a, a case like that, ten, eleven o'clock, which was part of the public hearing process, cuz you may have houses nearby, there may be loud music, we get neighborhood, neighbors complaining, loud music, fights. Yeah, we would send a letter saying conditional use permit. Obviously, we would have to do inspections. We'd have to get complaints. You'd go out there, verify. If that were the case, we'd put a notice, and then hopefully, they just would follow the rules. Because part of a conditional use permit is a public hearing process like this as well. If an applicant has an issue with the conditions, they can address those conditions at that time as well. So they could say, you know, ten o'clock's not late enough. We feel like we need to be open till twelve, and then those, those issues can be talked about at that time through the public forum. So that's how that would be handled.
Does this change with the Senate bill? Like, how the process ends up working? Like, what are we up against on that?
Not specifically. So the, the big change that would come with, a- and you're talking about Senate Bill thirty-two with the land use plan. So the main change that happens here is when we're granting a conditional use permit, um, or a preliminary plat, uh, for example, some of the other stuff we saw here, it wouldn't go to a public hearing. So site-specific review would be done administratively. So once we fully get under three-eighty-two, a conditional use permit wouldn't come in front of um either the Planning Commission or the city council. It would be uh approved or denied administratively. But this process is set up for the revocation to go through city council, uh, and not having that with staff.
Okay. So how would then someone question one of the um conditions of approval? If they're, if they're only dealing with the planning department, and there's no public comment?
We'd be still working with them. They'd still need to put together, um, you know, I guess we haven't worked out all the specific details in the applications, but they'd still be coming to us with the full application packet. We'd still need to make those same findings and, and the review criteria. We would just be doing the review and issuing the, the conditional use permit, and that's-
They'd still have the opportunity to say, hey, I don't like this condition of approval. Can we tweak it this way?
Absolutely, yeah. That's, that'd be part of what we'd be going through, and, and just to reiterate, that's not the city saying that we want to change CUPs that way. That was the state legislature saying that we shall re-change those. So, um, just wanted to make that clear.
Okay.
Like I said, be- because of that, there will be a lot of conditionally permitted uses that become permitted, especially in regards to housing and such. So a lot of those kind of uses, similar to the one we saw earlier, would, those will just become permitted. So those likely won't be under that. Except we, we still are working through the land use plan and any zoning ordinance updates, but there will be some changes to conditionally permitted uses and permitted uses to reflect those state law changes.
Okay. Um, is there a, a level of evidence that is going to have to be reached to, like, meet requirements? Because I know in previous instances, there was a whole lot of feelings involved, um, that couldn't really be proved one way or the other. So, you know, and in certain situations, they didn't necessarily have control over what was happening, because it happened off property. So like in that instance, like what level of evidence is necessary to trigger this whole process?
So that's in sub-three. So in, in terms of triggering it, that's pretty much just, you know, i- it typically, I would assume, be a complaint that would come in. We would take a look at it, and if it seemed like there was something there, it's calling them in to have that discussion, you know, as far as sending the notice out. Once you're in that process, then the sub-three is really what talks about that. Again, city council being the hearing body and following the procedures in there. But if, they would need to make a finding that one or more of the criteria that we talked about, the misrepresentation, whether intentional or not, um, or, or violating uh conditions, um, would be established by a preponderance of the evidence. And preponderance of the evidence would be a legal term that you see in civil cases, where basically it's, it's a, i- it is kind of a fifty-fifty thing. You know, it's fifty-one percent towards uh whichever party would be the preponderance of the evidence. But it's also why we built in the appeal to district court uh within thirty days. But it does introduce a level of, of um evidence that would need to be established and findings that council would have to make in those situations. And they can't act, like any type of action, they can't take, they can't be arbitrary and capricious about it. So, you know, I, I don't think it's fair to them to think that they're just going to be willy-nilly in terms of applying something. There's always an arbitrary and capricious standard that they'd have to follow, and they would have to base that on the criteria that are listed uh in the ordinance in this situation.
And I, I think a bit that gets lost here too. It's, it's a, a conditional use permit's also to protect the neighborhood, not just the property owner. It goes both ways. So, you know, that, that's something to consider, and nobody's forcing somebody to apply for a conditional use permit. It's, it's their risk. They're requesting it from the city. If, if they don't feel like they want to do, and that's certainly something the Planning Commission and the city council consider, whether they want to add this burden. But it is, that is the case. If you're gonna do a conditional, conditional use permit and you want to enforce it, you want to make sure that, that what was proposed is what it is, this would be the process the city needs to be able to enforce that. Like I said, otherwise, if the council or the planning commission doesn't feel like this is necessary, then our next recommendation would be that we need to look at particular uses one by one and put them in a more appropriate zone that won't have that neighborhood impact that you wouldn't be able to mitigate. So that's what you would have to do, um, if you didn't have a process like this set up.
I have one more devil's advocate thing. Um, for instance, on Northwest View, we approved a CUP for townhomes uh to be added to that property. It wasn't zoned for that. They got a CUP. If that got revoked, what happens there? Cuz they're individual properties, si- with the subdivision. So how does that work in this situation?
Well, again, part of it is just changing your mind on a situation like that. If revocation came up, it wouldn't be a situation where, oh, we decided we didn't want townhomes there. So if they're coming through and there was, just off topic, I, I know we pulled it as a condition, but say it was the shared driveways, you know, and that was a condition that you wanted to keep on there for whatever reason, uh, with the townhomes. And they go out and they do the development, and they say, no, we don't want to do the shared driveways. We don't care what the condition says. And they put in the individual driveways, then that would be something where they weren't following this here, and we'd expect them to remedy that situation. But it would give us a tool to go back and say, no, you need to follow what those, those conditions were. If everything in there was, was compliant with what the terms of that was, um, a- and again, just confining it to those, those driveways. They had the shared driveways there in exactly the way that it was, was proposed and reviewed and approved. There'd be no basis to go out and, and revoke that. And in that case, if the city did, then we would be, well, first of all, we'd probably be overturned with a thirty-day appeal to district court. But it would also probably be something that'd be arbitrary and capricious if we tried to do that without having a violation of the CUP or a misrepresentation that came in, so.
With no more board discussion, committee of the roll call, please.
Pip Burke. Doug Kaufman.
Yes.
Joshua Borgart.
Yes.
Kate Walker.
Yes.
Rory Young.
Aye. Motion passes. I guess city council December first.
Correct.
The time lucky. Uh, with that, we'll close our public hearing for this evening and check in on old business.
So old business, last time we had the annexation of the property down off the snow line for the county jail. Uh, that did go through um city council. It was annexed. Just a little note on that. I can't remember if I mentioned it the last time or not, but there was a recent change in state law that would allow those annexations and zonings to go through with a single resolution. Just a little note on that, I can't remember if I mentioned it the last time or not, but there was a recent change in state law that would allow those annexations and zonings to go through with a single resolution. Whereas before, he had to have the annexation as a resolution, then he had to have two readings on the zoning. This is all done now with one, you don't have the two readings and then the thirty days after that for the zoning, so it's a little change in process, but that was the first one that went through. Uh, that was in that manner, but in any case, that went through, so that property is annexed with the P one zoning.
New business?
So new business, we've got, uh, three applications in, all conditional use permits. Um, so Fat Boys is, uh, kind of expanding their casino area, uh, and so that would require a CUP. Even though it's not a building extension, it's expanding the conditional pers- conditionally permitted use within the building. Um, there's a application for multi-family development off of Village Loop, um, thirty-six units up there, it's. Pretty close to the, um, four-unit one that we looked at a couple of years ago, that, that came through. And then Northwestern Energy on North Meridian, uh, was looking at doing a, a building expansion, so we'd have those three CUPs. Uh, and then we'd also continue, continue with our land use plan, uh, work sessions as part of that meeting too, after that meeting.
Anything else from the board? Very good. Stick around for a work session.
Did you want to roll into that, or do you want to take a couple-minute break?
You don't need a break?
To aligning with the new state legis- to aligning with the new state legislation. Under Malupa three eighty-two, modernizing our economic and environmental strategies. Ensuring the growth policy continues to guide Kalispell's development efficiency through twenty forty-five. The purpose of this update is to bring the growth policy into full alignment with the Montana Land Use Planning Act, Malupa three eighty-two. We've integrated updated twenty twenty-five economic and environmental data. Refined how land use designations correspond with infrastructure and services. And ensure consistency across all chapters. The goal is to provide clarity and predictability for annexations, subdivisions. And development review while maintaining Kalispell's community character and sta- and sustainability. Chapter five, focus on sustaining a diverse and resilient economy. It emphasizes business retention, entrepreneurship, and attracting new investment. Collaboration between the city, Chamber Commerce, Flathead Valley Community College, and private sector partners is key. Primary growth sectors include tourism, manufacturing, healthcare, and technology, with the focus areas like remote work. Outdoor recreation, and small-scale manufacturing. Five main issues emerged. Workforce shortages and housing affordability remain top concerns. Infrastructure capacity, especially for industrial and commercial growth, must keep pace. Balancing tourism and community character is a growing priority. Strengthening education and job training partnerships supports workforce readiness. Downtown revitalization continues to drive infill, adaptive reuse, and walkability improvements. Goal one. Expand economic opportunities by supporting flexible zoning and encouraging mixed-use redevelopment downtown. Goal two. Retain and attract a skilled workforce through partnership with F V C C, local schools. And align housing policy to support employees near job centers. Goal three. Promote sustainable growth by ensuring land use decisions aligned with infrastructure investments and maintaining Kalispell's quality of life. These goals directly support Planet Twenty Thirty-five and the city's capital improvement plan. Develop an economic opportunity map, identifying priority growth zones like US ninety-three and the core area. Streamline permitting for small-scale manufacturing and create industries. Expand broadband infrastructure to support innovation and remote work. Coordinate with regional partners on a workforce housing strategy. Introduce redevelopment incentives, faceted grants, tax abandments for unutilized parcels. These actions strengthen our foundation for sustainable econo- economic growth. Chapter six.
Don't, before, before you jump in there, um, one of the things, and I know that I, um, have a dog in this fight, but the. I, I know the policies, the section five, it says. Your slideshow is different than the, than what we have here, but it says. Support the Kalispell area's position as a regional commercial center. And a location of major healthcare, government, industrial facilities, and retail services. Um, I, I guess one thing I asked the board, there's, there has been discussion over the years of. Being a, uh, recreational center. Like creating a youth recreational center that it brings in out of town, and we've got kids' sports that brings in, I don't know if that maybe should be. Part of our economic development, whether it's policies, goals, recommendations, whatever, um. Having a youth in sport, it seems, it is certainly important to me, I don't know if the, um, if it's something that we want to include in our, in that section. The encouragement of whether it's youth sport or whether it's, you know, um. We talk about. The Kalispell being the center of the, um, regional commercial center, being a regional recreational center too, I, I don't know if that's a sports or whatever.
So you're taking that off that first page of chapter five in the text, right? Where it says Kalispell's the retail, commercial, and government center of Flathead Valley?
I'm taking it off what, what was in our handout, it was chapter five, under policies. Number five says, support the Kalispell area's position as a regional commercial center and a location of major healthcare, government, industrial. It just occurred to me that there's nothing in there about, um, recreational or sporting facilities, whether that's.
And, and we can certainly add something in there, I mean, there's, there's always a balance between calling out. Subcategories of being a commercial center, I don't think it was intended to exclude that at all.
A- and I'm just asking if the, if, I mean, if the, if the commission feels that it's worthwhile, or if it's just, um, I.
We, we can certainly add something in there, uh, on the economic thing, and I. Whether it was specific to like youth sports or just general for, for recreation, including attracting, um. You know. Attracting youth sports or, or expanding that a little bit in some, and we can certainly add something in like that, like Roy said, if the board feels like it's important enough to call that out specifically. That's, that's not a problem, wasn't, I mean, it's no way intended not to do that, so.
And the reason I said is that I, I just know how that snowball can grow, right? You, you put something in there that mentions healthcare, and that's how we've been able to support. Logan Health in their growth, and if we put something in there to mention something that is whatever, recreation or youth sport, however, however we want to phrase it. It's, it's that then somebody who wants to develop that can point to the growth policy and can go to outside consultants and say, look. The city supports this, it's written into the, the Malupa, but I, again, I'm, I have a reason for.
Yeah, did you say that was number five under policies? Is that what you were looking at?
Yeah, in the, in the, in the handout, that Cr- Kristen's in us.
Yeah, um, well, we'll, we'll step through some things here too, that, you know, the following number six also says support amenities and activities that promote the Kalispell area's retirement tourism convention and arts destination, so. I mean, tourism would fall under that, we can certainly add in like a youth sports thing too, or something like that.
Yeah, whether it's recreational tourism, I, I, it's just, I've seen some reports on, on areas that have really gone after that, is, has tried to attract. Be the center of a regional sporting facility, and it, it's a, it's a legitimate thing, whether we have the population and, and whether that's what everyone wants, I, I don't know, but.
Yeah, we, we can, yeah.
And whether it's wherever it is, just.
Yeah, no problem.
That's all, that was.
I agree, thank you. Chapter six. Chapter six emphasizes the protection and management of natural systems as the city continues to grow. It incorporates updated floodplain, wetland, riparian, and slope mapping to ensure accurate environmental review. The new focus areas include climate resilience, air quality, and wildlife mitigation. This chapter ensures that the environmental stewardship remains a cornerstone, co- a cornerstone of Kalispell's planning framework. The update identifies several key issues, floodplain and stormwater management, particularly near Ashley Creek and Stillwater River. Wildlife risk in urban wildland interface areas. Water quality and aquifer protection for long-term drinking supply. Habitic fragmentation, and the need for open space corridors. Tree canopies lost and managing, managing invasive species. These issues require coordinated planning with the M F W P, D N R C, and Flathead County. Goal one. Protect water resources through best management practices, maintaining drainage systems and protecting recharge areas. Goal two. Enhance air quality by supporting alternative transportation and urban forestry. Goal three. Promote ecological resilience, apply firewise principles, maintain defensible space, and protect riparian corridors. These goals ensure development occurs in harmony with Kalispell's natural landscape. Adopt the updated twenty twenty-five G S, G I S-based floodplain and wetland maps. Coordinate closely with the Flathead County on wildlife migration efforts. Continue monitoring stormwater with M S four permit. Update the tree canopy inventory and continue expanding the urban forestry plan in coordination with the city's park and recreation department. Integrate identified concerns directly into subdivision and site plan review process. Together, these actions strengthen Kalispell's environmental rel- resilience and support long-term sustainability. Thank you for your time and engagement this evening, we welcome your input and discussion on these updates, PJ will now step through the actual text document for a detailed review.
Let's trip over in just a second, so. Why is that, not showing up there? I wonder if there's. Thing because it was in the PowerPoint, and this isn't in PowerPoint, but I'm not sure why it's not going up.
He touched the mouse, so it did click on it again.
To kind of review, but would you kind of want to step through this, especially for public hearing, not, it's not a public hearing, but for public purposes. Uh to see what's out there, see if there's anything specific that you had. Uh, chapter five, um, as Donnie mentioned, was the economic development section. Uh, this, a lot of this was kind of reflected in the same format that we've typically used and kind of reflecting what's been on the books with everything. Um, so the first part is kind of just the general description in the background. Kind of steps through issues, um, certainly something that we've done is kind of updated some of these statistics from what was in here previously. And again, I said, I'll just roll through it pretty quickly, but if there's things that you want to add, one important thing that we did add, um, that wasn't in there previously is that the twenty-five legislature revised tax rates. And that's partly what we're seeing out there where there was um kind of the same pie, you see the reduction in uh certain residential, um. You know, lesser valued properties have increased um. What the taxes are on higher end properties as well as commercial and industrial. City of Kalispell doesn't have a lot of higher end. Um, residential, so a lot of that burden is getting shifted to the. Commercial sector, which is certainly something we've heard a lot about, and so we wanted to make sure that that was reflected in here. So again, not too much in the way of changes from what we've had, had previously in here. Down here, I think was where. Rory was talking about before, potentially adding something in here that would reflect the uh. Recreational tourism or even more specifically to, to youth tourism with that.
It could even be in that next line where you could say convention and.
Yeah, right down here in six.
At sport or, or something in there.
Yeah, I think that would be the place to. Um, the highway community entrances, um, this is something we left in here. We've largely adopted that in our regulations, but I think it's still important to keep that within the, the land use plan to. Highlight why that's there. Yeah, and then recommendations, just kind of following through with that, so. In any case, we've got any other comments on, on that? Again, it follows kind of the typical format that we've used through everything else that people seem comfortable with, with calling out issues and. Goals, policies, recommendations. So, anything there? Okay. Um, going to. Natural environment, I'm going to try to zoom in on this a little bit just because that. This looks better up there. Um, so the first part of this chapter kind of follows that same format with issues and so forth. There's a lot. That we needed to put in in terms of background information, you know, current conditions that were out there that don't really follow that, that issues, goals. Format so much, so this first portion uh is largely what we have within the existing uh growth policy. And again, I'll kind of roll through it pretty quickly, but if there's anything you want me to stop at, just let me know.
I, I guess PJ, that was my one question is like. Item six has issues, goals, recommendations, but six point one and six point two don't. That was intentional.
That was the intent, because we struggled a little bit because we wanted to follow that format as much as we could, um. When we've set out that outline, we've kind of gone through that with you before, that was kind of trying to follow what the um. The codified version of the land use plan stuff is, um, it was just, in, in something like this, it was just really hard. To do, especially with the amount of information we're trying to put in there, uh, so we kind of chose to. Tweak that format a little bit as we're moving forward. And again, this is the portion where, you know, we'd kind of follow that. Typical layout. And not too much new in there. And certainly inserting, you know, we, a lot of this will be supported with um. Maps and charts and figures, some of which might be in a separate appendix, but it would be there to support it. Uh, some things might get inserted into here, but that would certainly be the next step as we're moving forward. Um, you know, as you mentioned, then we kind of jump into environmental considerations. And, and this is where it's really just kind of some of this background information. So, you know, talking about climate, uh, going into water quality. Um, water quality has got a lot of technical aspects to it. This was something that Public Works looked at and, and kind of. Vetted and tweaked with our original draft to make sure that it was accurate in terms of uh what's out there. And quite a bit with that, um, you know, addressing floodplain, floodplain is certainly something. That's pretty significant in land use plan area, especially in areas that are outside the city limits. We don't have a ton that's inside the city limits. Um, but floods definitely can happen here and major floods can happen here and, and it's certainly something that we need to take into account as we're looking at things. Certainly groundwater um as part of that. And, you know, groundwater has two different aspects to it as we're talking about that, you know, one is you're kind of also looking at. How does that impact development on a property? I mean, can you get down and do a, a basement, for example? How does it impact drainage and so forth? But it also has a big tie into the aquifer, um, and not just in terms of. Our water supply, but also how that then would eventually infiltrate and get to uh rivers and streams, get down to Flathead Lake. Uh, a lot of the things in the environmental section here that we talked about, kind of take a broader look at the valley, not just our uh. Our planning area um alone as a standalone issue.
Uh, PJ, each of, each of these headings, I'm assuming comes from some kind of a checklist or something in.
Um, in, in large part, I mean, when we're setting out what we wanted to do with this, we were really kind of looking at, at three eighty-two. It didn't necessarily call out each individual one of these, but there's broader categories and. Um, I think, you know, we went through to be really careful that everything that was called out. In the statute would be reflected one way or another here. But there's something, can be some details that come up that, that we added even beyond that. But, you know, surface water, stormwater runoff. Um, and again, Public Works looked at the stormwater runoff pretty, pretty closely. Um, you know, wetlands being an issue in here. You know. Topography um is certainly something that we'd want to take into account. Um, most of our planning area doesn't really have. Much topography that gets up to the twenty-five percent that's really an issue. You know, soils is something that we always look at that, you know, we touched um. With the North Meadows here, you know, the potential for hydroic soils and, and kind of requiring something that was a little more specific, um, as far as the geotech to determine that that wasn't there. Um, and related to that, you know, agricultural soils and um. Seismic, uh, something that we added in here that we didn't have before, but you know, something to highlight as we're moving forward is that most people don't think of this as like a really high seismic area, but we are seismic design category D. Uh, which is actually most of California is, is, is a D. Um, we're. You know, near a, a number of major faults. It's not San Andreas Fault, but it's, you know, it's something that really impacts that. Um, and that is something that's reflected in our building permits and, and requirements that they have um in construction. Air quality, um. We looked at the uh wildland urban interface, uh, which is certainly something that. A lot of communities are looking at more closely now than they did, you know, thirty or forty years ago, but trying to, you know. Protect those situations where you don't want, you know, a forest fire blowing through town. How do you protect those situations? How do you protect um individual property owners uh to the extent that you can by kind of planning that out? Jumping into wildlife, um, it was definitely something that, you know, we wanted to step through and look at, at, at that, uh, certainly something that was called out in three eighty-two. Uh, we looked at riparian habitat, um. Getting running through, a lot of that's certainly tied to wetlands and floodplain that was discussed earlier, uh fisheries would be tied into that. Um, you know, you're also looking at vegetative cover, um, when you're looking at um wildlife, because that's part of their habitat, so we included that in here. Um, you know, not just, you know, grasslands, but also, you know, forested areas. Uh, looking at some of the main species that we would see out with the whitetail deer, uh, which are kind of all over the place. Um, mule deer, um elk, um. Moose, black bear, grizzlies, mountain lions. There's two things that we're looking at as part of this, so it formed the basis for some of these, and one is there's some maps we've had from Fish Wildlife and Parks for the last. Close to twenty years that kind of really lays some of this out. There's also some uh. New GIS-based um apps that are out there that, you know, it's supplied by the state, uh, that can really drill down into a lot of detail. And so we looked at. Both of those as we were putting together some of these um descriptions. Uh, we did put something in for migrating waterfowl, uh, which is certainly something that's important here, um. We did get a number of uh public comments about sandhill cranes, um, and uh some pothole wetlands in West Valley. Uh, that utilize that as part of their migration, uh, so we wanted to make sure that that was included in here, uh, as a consideration when development. If and when development starts happening in that area. Addressing wildlife, human conflicts, um, but then that just jumps us into natural resources. You know, again, some of this is tied into the other ones, but water resources, surface water. Uh, groundwater, um, wetlands, floodplains, soil. Um, this is the section in here, we are specifically supposed to um look at sand and gravel. Uh, mineral resources and sand and gravel are our main, main resources here. This is kind of when we get back into the, the issues, goals, policies, recommendations. Um, because that was something that was part of our existing growth policies. There's not really much of anything changed there. Uh, and then forests and vegetation resources, so that's how we structured um chapter six. So any comments or questions on any of that? Okay, um, so the one other thing that we wanted to touch base on was kind of going back to the housing strategies that we looked at before. And just so you know where we're at right now is, now that we've gotten through chapters five and six tonight. We've looked at all of the chapters up to our implementation plan and we'll be putting that together. Um, what we're hoping to do, uh, so we're not locked specifically into the schedule, but what we're hoping to do is to get something together where we'd have a comprehensive document at the next um. Work session. Uh, and hopefully what we would do on the ninth would be to. Kind of go back over that, see how it all came together, see how the maps and everything are plugged in there, give you guys another kind of. Bite at the apple to kind of see if there's any questions or comments. And then if we're all in good shape at that point, we would move to a public hearing in January. So that's kind of what we're hoping established. Established, um. You know, we haven't had that many that have come through. It's been a limited number every year. Our. Facilities plans updates that are going through Public Works would account for a factor um in some of these areas, uh, so I don't think that there's a. Really strong concern that we can't handle that in terms of infrastructure. Um, I also think it's very likely uh in the next legislative session that this would become mandatory. Um, it almost became mandatory. In this legislation, I, I think that they got through three, if I remember rights, don't quote me on this, but I think that they got through three readings in one chamber. And then it got pulled out on the third reading in the other chamber to make that mandatory, even for three eighty-two cities like us. So I think kind of the writings on the wall was some of that, and if we include that as, as housing strategies, um, it's certainly something that. Would make sense and, and would have a fair amount of support out there for that. Um, but clearly we had support for um zoning for higher density near transit areas or um higher education facilities or. You know, places of employment and so forth. I think we, we already do that. Nobody had a problem there. The parking requirement, like we said, that's in eleven months, that's going to be mandated anyway, um, as part of that uh new statute, so people were fine incorporating that. Single room occupancies, people were fine with uh eliminating, well. I guess dropping minimum lot sizes by twenty-five percent, people were comfortable with. Uh, tiny homes, people were comfortable with, and again, that would mainly take really more than a zoning change would be a change in um. The appendix queue, which is something that we can adopt through the state, uh, we just haven't adopted that yet. The one thing that we had in here that was. Originally a preferred that we backed out and became not preferred, uh, was increasing building heights um by the twenty-five percent. We didn't really need it. Um, and so that was something that Plan Commission wanted to pull out. Uh, and then the last one that we were going to have in here was allowing multi-unit dwellings or mixed uses permitted use in uh. Office, retail and commercial zones, so we really do that except for the RA one and RA two, so it essentially be not requiring a CUP for. Apartments in the RA one zone is really the only change from what we do, um, and that had support the last time through, so. Um, you know, unless there was questions or comments on that, we were going to move forward with those uh preferred. Uh, housing options in that implementation chapter, uh, and then follow that up with the zoning updates in the spring.
We have to pick a certain number, right?
We have to have at least five, and this would give us at least a five, you know, it's not a bad thing to have a couple more in case one failed for some reason. Um, and you're not capped anyway, we can adopt all of them if we wanted to, all fourteen, um, but there were. Uh, those are the ones that were preferred, um, you know, not preferred just as refresher was, um, was kind of dropping some of the impact fees for certain types of uses. Allowing triplexes and fourplexes as permitted uses, anywhere where a single family was allowed. Um, dropping setbacks by twenty-five percent, uh, reducing aesthetic standards for apartments. Um, and then allowing multi-unit dwelling, dwelling in, dwellings beyond triplexes and fourplexes wasn't very supported either, so. Uh, we kind of pushed those ones off to the side and we're focused on the uh. The ones that were in the preferred category.
So how many did you just run through in preferred? Five or six?
Um, it was more, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Eight, so that, that would really be seven, because.
We took.
Even, even though they say there's fourteen, if you have two that are kind of stacked on each other, like the uh A and B are as far as ADUs, they only count as one. Um, but I, I would say if we adopted everything that was in here, we'd be having seven.
But didn't you say we want to take one out?
That would be taking one out.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and then it would be consolidating one of these here, so. Again, I, I would put it at, at seven, which is a good healthy number to be out with that. So, any questions on the housing strategies? Okay. If not, any questions on any things that we covered or any additional comments that came up, or, or are we on the right track to, to get that? Kind of comprehensive draft to you?
Um, I guess what, what the process beyond us is then if we get things done by January. City council, probably what work session, February, March.
Well, we'll see where council wants to go, because it's their prerogative with how many work sessions they want to do and what pace they want to do. Um, but if we. So if the planning commission has a recommendation of approval uh in January, that would move it on to them, and so then you guys would be done with the land use plan component of that. And then it would be on to city council. The one thing, or two things that we would need to be, bring back in front of you is we also need to update the zoning and subdivision regulations, and so we would need to do that at some point um in the spring as well. Uh, and get that to city council to, to move forward, so it's going to be a tight timetable as, as it is here for, for city council, but. That's what we'd be looking at. This wouldn't. Finalize everything with what you need to do, but it, it would be a major step in the process.
I don't have any questions.
What else?
Nope, I say go for it.
Okay.
I say go home.
What's next?
We'll go for it then. Alright, thanks for your patience.
Sure. Do it. Kerry, do you need me to sign this? Kerry? Or Kirsten?